If we could please call the roll.
Mayor Breitkerz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Allbritton?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. If you can please join me in the pledge.
Yeah, I guess.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, great. Once again, welcome, everyone. We'd like to start the meeting. We've got some guests from Waste Pro, and we would like to welcome you up here. Russell, if you can come on up, and we appreciate you coming out this evening and kind of creating, you know, a forum where we can communicate a little bit back and forth.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and thank you to your manager for allowing us to get on this evening. You know, I've been in this business 26 years, started out of high school, and it's the only thing I know, the only thing I've done, and I have to tell you that, you know, these last couple of years have been the hardest it's ever possibly been to pick up garbage. So I want to go through a little bit of that, but really wanted to take the opportunity. I know you're going through a public process, and I won't have this opportunity in a little bit to address you personally, but then to also talk to the residents a little bit about, you know, what's been going on in our industry and things that we need to do better in the town here. We are committed. We want to continue to be here. I know that our service level needs to improve. I mean, for me, I've grown our business in the state of Florida from a one-truck, 20-container operation. I now have 700 trucks under my operation and, you know, a million residential customers. And we've done that through providing service and being attentive to the customer's needs. COVID is leaving us and has sort of gone, but there's just lingering effects, and there are some impacts that are tremendously, you know, the town of Southwest Ranches was difficult for waste management. It was difficult for SWS and the haulers that you've had before, and that was without the COVID impact. So, you know, since we've been in the town, we've had, the last couple of years, it's, there is a shortage of people of epic proportion right now. And what makes that even more difficult is the people that you do have, you're just happy that they show up for work. So we have some drivers and some individuals that we would, under normal circumstances, really coach on the small details, the finer details, clean up, you know, don't leave a mess in the street, put the can back, don't throw it in the swale. Unfortunately, right now, it's to have every truck covered. We've, instead of holding the bar high, we've lowered the bar a little bit to have those routes covered, and that's something that we have to do, we have to get better at. We have to accept that as that's the reality of it, and what are we going to do to train and motivate and get our individuals better? And we're committed to doing that. An item I did not see coming is the supply chain effect. You know, we've been really running behind on yard waste and the bulk collection routes here. I have four vehicles that sit in my yard waiting for a part, and there's just, it doesn't exist in the United States to find the part, which is just mind-boggling to me. And, you know, we're trying to work through that. We're trying to go to machine shops and have them, you know, work on it. We're not just accepting it as, hey, this is the, our fate, and we have to deal with it. So we are trying to find solutions to keep the routes on schedule and to do what we need to do. It has been difficult. The stay-at-home mentality is carried over. It's carried over where people are living a little bit differently. They're getting their food delivered to their homes instead of, you know, eating out as much. They're buying a lot more than the Amazon effect, as you'll call it. So the actual garbage at the curb is about 20, 25% more, and the available workforce to do the work is about 25% less. So if I can just, that makes it really hard to get it done. This is not a struggle just in the town of Southwest Ranches. It is all over the state of Florida. There are some towns that service is a lot better, and it's really dependent on just the workforce in those communities that really drive it, the management in those facilities. We have a plan to hire, to recruit. We're recruiting from all over the country right now. Everybody wants to come to Florida. It's a destination place. We are trying to bring in experienced drivers from the Northeast, the Midwest, any affected areas that, and we've been successful starting to do that. The labor issue is starting to turn the curve, and that is encouraging because that will enable us to have accountability. And accountability is the piece that we're missing right now to improve the services to where they need to be. We have a good team that is dedicated, you know, an area we were just talking about, communication, could and should be so much better when you're stretched thin and you're putting out 100 fires. It's a good excuse for why we don't communicate as well as we should on proactively, on delays, proactively on issues that we need to. But, you know, that's something that we have to work for as a team. We intend to participate in the solicitation that you're putting out. We really are interested in getting past this hump. We understand the pressure that it puts on elected officials. You're the go-to in today's day and age when there's problems, and no news is good news. Unfortunately, garbage has been, you know, really big news, and it's an essential service. I mean, you know, you want to really find out what's going on in a community. Don't pick up the garbage for two days. I mean, you will hear from everybody and anybody. So I just really wanted the opportunity to be here to answer any questions, to talk about, give you my commitment. I've been with the company 20 years. I'm an owner in the company. We're well-funded. We're committed. 80% of our cities, we have little to no issues. There are communities where we are. This is a difficult community just based on the set-out restrictions. It makes it tough, and it's getting tougher every day. You know, they don't build them like they used to. They don't build the trucks like they used to, and they don't build the collection personnel like they used to. We are working on adjusting to that, making the routes smaller, putting more trucks, more equipment in there. But with that, there is additional cost that comes. So I make myself available to any questions that you might have, but I wanted you to be able to hear it from me. I know I meet with Andy a lot, and not as often as I should, but, you know, I asked for the opportunity for you to hear it from me rather than communicated through your staff. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you, once again, you know, being willing to come here and kind of express the state of where things are at. I think that communication and knowledge is always good. I'll say from my perspective, I don't know, I'll start off. I don't know, we probably have some other questions as well. I, you know, I, for a couple of months, I tried hard to get a lot of feedback from the residents, and they responded. They responded really well. They gave me a lot of feedback, particularly on waste and what was good, what was bad, what needed to be changed, and a lot of great feedback. But if I had to, not if I had to, it was easy, actually, to pull out the single item that I heard more than anything else, and that was that if I have an issue, I'm not hearing back what's going on. My neighbor's stuff got picked up on either side. Mine wasn't. Why is that? And they couldn't get any response, you know? And I appreciate everything you have said, but I will say that I don't see that as a COVID issue. I see that as a service issue that is, you know, beyond the daily routes. That's something that, you know, is critical, you know, because if, you know, I assume in a lot of those situations, there was a reason why it was skipped. Maybe it was too big. Maybe there was things in there that, you know, determined that it should not be picked up. But no communication, it doesn't matter. You know, it becomes a bad situation regardless. What could have been a learning situation to, so that it happens once, and, okay, that's not acceptable. I won't do that again, and then we're good. Just becomes something that, you know, I have residents that have called me time after time after time. They just keep, they keep passing me by. They don't pick up my stuff, and I can't get a hold of them to find out why. And that, to me, is probably the most frustrating part of the whole thing, and I just feel like that's something that could have been handled.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. You know, as this has happened, it's affected, you know, all of our cities, not just the town of Southwest Ranches. So that is, that has elevated the number of calls that come to the office, the number of calls that the supervisors have to deal with on a daily basis, and it's tipped the scales and sort of broken the system. We have a process that if we really, truly follow it, it should be a good communication experience for the customer. It has not been. I mean, there's nothing I can say here that says that it has been. I have, you know, Tim Mooney, I've activated him, you know, to be really involved with the town to try to address those issues more proactively, and then even on the reactive issues, to get the response, because that's been a common, it's been very common, you know, your manager has really been all over me on that, saying, hey, we have to improve how we're getting this communication out. I will, you know, the phone system, we've hired a couple of extra customer service reps. The, we're seeing the call volume go down. We also bought a system that basically shows me how many calls a day come in, how many were answered, how many went to voicemail, if anybody just hung up and gave up on it. So that will give the 30,000-foot level of, hey, are we getting to all the calls to initially hear? There is that proactive approach on resolving and communicating back that, again, we haven't been very good at that, and we need to get better at that. So it's a point well-understood and taken, and something that we're working diligently on.
And I would say that, you know, you're in a unique situation that you can, you can work on that and show improvement, you know, in the next six months.
Absolutely.
Would be important. So, let me open up to the, yeah, go ahead.
You used the term that, maybe it's an industry term that I'm not aware of. You called it set-out restrictions, and you've mentioned that ours are different, and it makes it more challenging. Maybe you can explain to me what that means, and also what challenges you find from those restrictions?
Yeah, so I, there's a couple of different items there. The, just the amount, the size of the pile, and the number of homes that participate in a large-size pile in Southwest Ranches is much different than many of the other communities in South Florida. When that occurs, so garbage and recycling, if you know that you have 1,000 homes on the route, it's pretty standard that on the first cycle day, if it's Monday and Thursday, 80% of them are going to put their trash out the first day, and on the second day, it drops down to about 60%. So going into that, you know exactly how many trucks, you know, what the productivity level is. Southwest Ranches, you can have a participation on one street that locks that truck down for the entire day between five or-
Talking bulk, or are we talking trash?
Bulk, bulk.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so your trash is not, I mean, we have a trash truck. We're not having a ton of issues on that. If there's something heavy or something that they can't manually throw into the vehicle.
So bulk is twice a month, so there wouldn't be a 60-80 breakdown like you're talking about?
No, 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 sir. That's the twice-a-month opportunity that a resident gets, but if we have a little storm that blows through, that's, and everybody's palm fronds are out, well, 90% of the volume that happens in that month may be out on that day for that. So that causes this fluctuation in the number of pieces of equipment needed, which then causes the delays. Everybody expects, hey, I'm supposed to be on Monday. They're not here. Well, now you're behind on Tuesday. You're behind on Wednesday, and it just causes this never-ending effect that occurs for that week. So the set-out restrictions, you do have a lot of commercial-type businesses that have commercial-type operation that are inter-residential, that bring material out to the curb that is very difficult to handle with the vehicle, even with the big claw. Everybody thinks, oh, you know, that should be able to pick everything up. Root balls and dirt and concrete, those are things that really aren't part of the system, and we have not done as good a job putting the notification on that pile, getting it to town personnel so we can proactively cut those off. That call comes to an elected official. It comes to the town and says, hey, I was missed. Well, now that's set the, or, I mean, the expectation that it was missed, okay, we'll look into it. We'll go get it, that we're going to come back out there. And it's not for three or four or five days until they get the answer that they really didn't put it out correctly, and that's something that needs to be cleaned up on the streamlining of communication, transfer, and share. But the quantity on a per-home basis that Southwest Ranches creates is tremendously more than any community in Broward County.
Well, I understand that, but this is, what, a five-year contract?
Yes.
I can see those reasons perhaps before the pandemic, but it seems to me now that you've been on this so long, you would have figured out how to solve those problems, because we pay for it.
Yeah.
I mean, you know that. We pay tipping charges on everything that you all pick up, and we look for a contract that, you know, is going to service our needs. The fact that we're putting out more than you expected, it seems to me you would have adjusted by now.
Yeah, so the problem post-pandemic is really a personnel and truck availability issue. We were getting into that groove, say, going to year two, of understanding exactly what the set-out was in the town, and we were starting to have a system that was working really well. And right now, it's, you know, it's not just even the number of heads. We raised wages tremendously, and an unintended impact of that, and this is happening across all industries, our personnel are required to work six days a week. We raise the wages. They make what they used to make in six days in four days. They don't want to come to work the other two days a week. They don't want to make any more money. They're just happy that their bills are paid in four days rather than six days.
Right.
So now we're having to adjust to that and bring on more personnel, do more training, and we're just, we're caught in that little bit of a lag right now. We've identified the issues. We know what the issues are. We know how to fix the issues, but we got to get that implemented and done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, excuse me, you mentioned, Jim Allbritton, you mentioned that there was a workforce shortage. Are your drivers required to have CDL driver's license, and if so, does the company help them get that because it is expensive at times? And a second question would be, are there any other certifications as, from OSHA or whatever, as the NCCO that the crane operators have to have? And if so, are you helping them pay for that if it's required?
Great, great question. Every commercial driver of the vehicles that we have, because they have air brakes and they're over a certain weight, have to have a commercial driver's license, CDL Class B or higher.
Okay.
We have a program which has been very successful. It's our Cohart Program, where we take the individuals that work on the back of the trucks. We bring them in a starting position, and we spend six months training them how to operate the vehicle, do the pre-trip test. It's really not the driving test that people have problems with. You have to go around and inspect every component of the vehicle, and you have to be able to pass the written portion of the test. So we spend a lot of time on that. We compensate, pay for that for the individuals on the vehicles. They don't need any other qualification. I will say the clam truck, grapple truck is a skilled position. I mean, you can really mess stuff up. When that arm comes off, it looks like it's working really easy. You go down into the ground too much, you're going to dig a hole. No, but we've, you know, taken fences down. The car is coming over, and it swings too far, and it drops trash on a car that's passing by. I mean, you know, there's the nightmare stories. So we put a lot of training into those positions. Equipment operators of heavy equipment tend to make really good operators of grapple vehicles. They tend not to have the CDLs. So those are, we're trying to bring those types of individuals in and say, hey, we'll pay for the training to get you trained up on this piece of equipment. So we do pay for it for the certification that is needed, and we do on-the-job training for anybody who's interested. I think it's, you know, anybody who's kid's not going to be the next, you know, doctor. I mean, they all think they're going to be the next Facebook, you know, Instagram star. I have a 15-year-old daughter. She thinks that as well. But I think it's a great, either mechanics or getting into the operations of a vehicle. I mean, it's just a tremendous opportunity to make a lot of money, learn an industry, and get into a job that you can really have a great career in.
Great.
All right.
Mayor, could I ask one?
Yeah.
If I give you my card, would you give me a call?
Yes, sir.
Looking for people, and I do happen to know an organization that may, if you were interested, be able to help. They have people with CDLs. They have people with the NCCO certifications and stuff.
That'd be great.
They're looking to put them to work. So if that's something that, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then if you give me a call, there you go.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I have one quick thing.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I was wondering, hi, Russell.
Yeah, you're doing.
Good. Just a real quick question, just comment. When you all notified us that you were not renewing, I know that Andy met with you to see the issues in the town and see how the town can maybe improve things in its next procurement, and they're diligently working on that new procurement now. From the time you gave us notice and the time for us to hire the person to do the procurement and everything else, we're on track. The contract expires, I forgot the exact date.
September.
September, but we have that provision in there that says that we can request that you stay a few months after, I think it's up to six months, until that new procurement came out. I don't know if we notified you on that, but I just want to make sure that there's no issue, you're not running out of town, and that you'll be here for that duration until that procurement is finished.
Yeah, no, we're absolutely, you know, committed. We're hoping, as the mayor said, we got an opportunity to really show you a nice 90 days here that goes into that decision process, and it's a mute point at that point, you know? There are, you know, the fuel keeps on going up the way that it goes. That's something that I would want to address for the short-term period, because it's just, it's so unexpected. It's literally gone up $1.20 in two days on diesel fuel to me. So, but yes, absolutely. We're looking to stay here, and you have our commitment on that.
Thank you.
Russell, I appreciate you coming out. I'm going to open it up just for a few minutes to the residents so that they can, you know,
I'd appreciate that.
Give you feedback as well, but really sincerely, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. I am going to, I think this is a unique opportunity we have this evening to have Waste Pro here and have kind of that direct contact. I will say, I know that there have been moments of a lot of frustration. I'm going to ask that there be respect in any comments that we make, and so I'll just throw that out there, all right? So if somebody would like to, yeah, please come up to the mic and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Searle, and we live in Roland Oaks. I have a question for the company. One day, a team of, the driver and his helper came by to pick up the garbage twice a week pickup. They skipped our street, and I watched a truck drive by, and I'm home every day. So I thought about it and thought about it, how it wasn't right. So I gave it about 15 minutes, went down, found him on a couple blocks over, and told him he had missed our street, and he said he would come back, and he never came back that day. So fast forward, I don't know, two, three weeks later, there was another set of drivers that came in a truck, and these guys I talk to a little bit whenever I see them, and they said that their scheduled, what am I trying to say?
Route? The route?
The route, thank you. Their route, when they are done, they get to go home early. Is this true? And therefore, they think that by skipping a street here and there, they get to go home earlier, which made total sense to me. If they skip a street here, skip a street there, you wonder why your garbage didn't get picked up, and they're going home a little earlier. And my second question is, recently with the blue recyclable cans, are they not separating it in another truck now? Is it all just going out in one truck?
So what we'll do is hold off on their response.
Okay.
See if there's any other residents, and then I'll ask them to come up one more time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents that would like to, yeah, well?
Good evening. 1-8901, Southwest 63rd Street. I've had an ongoing, I don't know, what do you want to call it, with the driver for the last couple of years, where it's always contentious with regards to how much I put out. Couple of times, he's not wanted to pick it up. I went and did the measurements. I wrote it on the back of his deal and asked for the supervisor to come out, and he ended up coming back by and deciding to pick up the load, and then was upset because I wrote out how to do the math for 11.75 or 11.25 cubic yards on the back of the ticket so that he would know how to handle it in the future. I've had two or three neighbors that this particular driver did the same thing, too. I have talked to Andy in the town a couple of times, but, you know, when you have a driver that starts out with a negative attitude, and he does it to everybody in the neighborhood, it's not long before they don't even like to see him get there. I've been an owner of businesses, four or five companies. I understand employees. I understand the problems they come with, so I can sympathize with your explanation. But at the same time, as if we've got an employee with bad attitude, it's like a cancer, and it grows, and it not only grows with the employees, but it grows with the neighborhood. The overall garbage pickup, as far as I'm concerned, they do a great job, but when it comes to bulk pickup, they just resent it. We're on two and a half acres, and I told the driver, if I don't give you something every two weeks, then I'm taking it to the dump because that's what it takes to maintain two and a half acres. I'm not bringing anything in. It's nothing personal, and I'm going to do my best to keep it within the measurements that are required, and this is the way it's going to be. And so every two weeks, I do have a pile, and it is within the limits. So there for a while, every week, he'd come, park his truck, walk around that pile, and look at it. So finally, after about six weeks, I went out and I said, what is your problem with my pile? He goes, well, I know you've got something in there that shouldn't be in there. I said, okay, then I'll stand here, and you go through that pile, and you tell me what's not supposed to be in there because it's just landscaping debris. Those attitudes that that employee brings to the neighborhood is what is bad for a company's health. That's basically all I got to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt.
Good evening. Joseph Alchul, 5109 Southwest 164th Terrace. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys coming and, and trying to, to speak to the council and I appreciate some of the questions that were asked. And unfortunately, I, I had the feeling like I was listening to more excuses than anything else. You know, you guys started in 2017. Your problems didn't start in March 2020 when COVID lockdown started. Your guys' problems started long before that. And as the mayor said, the biggest problem besides no one responding to the phone calls is then nobody coming out and picking up the trash. So you have this tracking system now and you think that people are, are not calling as much because it's getting better. Maybe people aren't calling because they realize it's a waste of time. They realize that they might as well just bang their head against the wall, then deal with the frustration of trying to call you guys. And if they finally get through, being told something that's not going to be responded to. So don't have too much confidence that the reason you're not getting more calls is because you're doing a better job, because that's not the case. Now, one of the things I would ask you, you talk about how different we are. Didn't you know that before you bid on this job? Do you think that Southwest Ranches suddenly changed in 2017? And that prior to that time, we had just little piles of palm fronds and all of a sudden things got drastically different? Did you not do your due diligence? Because if you did, then why are you here today making excuses about how different we are? Did you expect that, that you were gonna come in with a low contract and then have it adjusted later on? I mean, what was the expectation here? And then you come in, at one time, I know in the beginning you had a route manager who, or, or someone who was in charge of the route, someone named Sean. He doesn't answer his calls for the last several years. I don't know if he's still with your company or not. All I know is it's impossible to get a response. You guys leave piles behind for no reason, piles that have nothing but proper materials that are not even close to being oversized. And then you don't, and if we're lucky, you come out two weeks later. So I hope you guys get your act together, but you know what? I don't want it at my cost, at my expense. I don't want it at this town's cost and this town's expense. If you guys are gonna get serious and do this right, then you need to start now. You need to have customer service that's going to respond when people have a question, when people have an issue. And you need to not leave the trash out there for two more weeks for the next pickup when there's a problem. I mean, we get told different messages. Well, we're not gonna pick it up if it's oversized. Okay, we're gonna measure it, we're gonna tell you, we're gonna pick it up and then we're gonna charge you. But you don't do it. Pick something and follow through and let us be able to rely on it. We never have this problem like we have now with any of the prior carriers. Since I've been in the town, I've been here for 18 years. It didn't start in March of 2020. It started long before then. So I would ask you, if you're gonna be here again, get your stuff together.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Russell, if you could, please.
You know, some good comments, but you know, I have to just address, I did open up by saying, you know, we, we were having a lot of issues. I, I, I did also say that I'm not here to make excuses. I'm, I'm, I'm here to give some, some reasoning behind what has occurred. We absolutely did understand what we bid on in 2017. And we came in and it was what we, we, we thought it was. The last two years have exacerbated the difficulty of servicing the town. And that, that's the point that, that I was making. It took a very difficult contract and made it difficult times 10. The, the customer service issues and not getting back and not communicating, those are things that we absolutely need to get better at. It, it, it's something that we, we do in many communities and we can do here. So, I mean, that's a point well taken. It's something that I, I couldn't sit here and say, oh, you know, our customer service has been good or at the level that it needs to be to, to give the satisfaction to your residents that they, they want. You know, the amount of calls that are coming in have dropped. I did not say the amount of calls, you know, coming in from Southwest Ranches were showing that we were doing a good job. I was just stating that the calls are starting to go down at the call center, which will allow us to answer more calls and get back to, to, to more people. To answer the question on the trash vehicle that did not collect the route and they are paid to complete their route in their entirety. We pay two separate performance bonuses to our drivers. One's $250 a year cumulative, so 500 the second year, 750 the third year, up to $2,500 for 10 years of service. If they have legitimate customer complaints that come in, they're eliminated from that, that bonus potential. We have a $10,000 bonus. You go three years, no, no accidents, no injuries, no customer complaints, no damage to the vehicle or, or the customer's property, you can get a check for $10,000 from us. Those are carrots that we dangle over. That, that system has been broken for the last two years since COVID. We, but there's individuals that don't care that they're not getting the bonus anymore. We have to, we have to address that in, in rebuilding the system to, to accommodate the, the needs of the new world that, that we're living in. The, the comment on recycling and trash, that should be collected in two separate vehicles. It is going to a facility where the, the recycling is being dumped in a recycling area at Rooter's Waste Management Facility out on 27. The trash, it goes to a separate facility. Sometimes it goes to Rooter's, sometimes it goes to the wheel abrader facility. But that should be separate. If, if that is not occurring for some reason or, or that is, that needs to be brought to our attention and, and we'll address it as needed. I think that was all of the, the comments.
I think, I, I, go ahead, Garrett, go ahead.
I, I just have a couple of comments, pretty much the council and, and the residents highlighted. But there's some real mixed messaging going on here and it's, and it's becoming really problematic and you touched on one of them. The other day I watched, it's Tuesday, same truck dumped both into, into, there was two separate trucks. It was just one truck and it dumped my own personal garbage into it. I have a regular big green can and a blue, and a blue one and they both went in the same hopper and they were done. So, and I've been telling everybody based on what we've been told, that recycling is no longer occurring. But now we're, we're, now we're switching gears and we're gonna switch back. But when you have events like that occur, it, it, the, the recycling portion, you know, everybody goes, yeah, sure. You know, something like that. That's just one, one that I could specify. The other one's really interesting is the black bag contractor bag. We're sending out in the newsletter, we're telling everybody, don't put your stuff in black bags because the driver can't see what's in it and there may be something in there, paint, cans, whatever it is, batteries, whatever, it's not, it's gonna contaminate a bulk load, you know, what have you. So I had a neighbor down the street, put out a whole bunch of black bags, didn't get picked up. There was another neighbor down another street, had 20 black bags stacked on top of one another. Every one of them got picked up. It's, so it's a whole mixed message.
You know, I have to add to that just, just real quickly that I had all my coconuts laid out there and I just, I just happened to be out there and the driver flagged me down. He says, you know, if you'll put those in a black bag, it'll be, it'll be a lot easier for me to pick them up. And ever since then, I've been putting them in the black bags. So, so yeah, definitely mixed messages.
Yeah, it's, and, and, and we've got it in the newsletter. I don't, I don't have the page out, but I mean, it, it says, don't put, you know, don't use the black bags on bulk pickup, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, the, the, the items that go inside the bag are problematic. I, I think what was driving the plastic bag messaging is there's a lot of equestrian and they put the horse manure in the bags.
Yeah, no, it contaminates the water.
Yeah, and, and it creates us, you know, problems not pick it up, put it in the truck, even though it's a, it's a special waste, it's not considered solid waste. It's once we dump it on the ground at the facility that we dump it at and then, you know, they, they, they charge us fees, they wanna bar us from the facility, you know, all these different things.
The reasons are legitimate, but with the mixed messaging is what, where it's getting to be problematic on the residential end. You know, where, where they're dumping both trash cans in the same can, in the same truck, you know, so that went out the window. And the black garbage bags, one guy doesn't get picked up, the guy down the street did get picked up.
No, and that, and, and that, that is, you know, when, when, and, and it was a good comment, you know, if you have the rule, stick, stick to it, you know? And that, that is really, I think some drivers, they, they try to figure out what's in the bag and, and, and make decisions out there. But if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna educate that this is the system, then that's what we need to, to, to stick to. So it, it's a, a really good point that we'll, we'll incorporate it into, to what we need to do.
So, so just, just so I'm clear and anybody watching us in YouTube land and, and all that, is the black bag acceptable or not acceptable to put leaves in such, in for bulk pickup?
Yeah, if, if you're putting leaves and stuff, it's, it's not a problem. The clear bag is the, 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 the bag of choice. You can get a clear bag, the same ply as the, the, the black bag.
Hang them out Amazon.
Yeah, and that just makes it easier for the person to see what's inside of it. So when it's obvious that it's yard waste and you, you can tell by kicking the bag, you know, if there's.
Yeah, well, the guy with the claws, they're really the.
Yeah.
He's ma, he's making the call up and, up in the seat.
Yeah. So I, I, I think, again, going with the clear bag is really the, the best way. I mean, I, I think they're, they're really, they're the same cost and they, you have the same, same ply of, of plastic.
I, I use the clear ones as well.
Yeah. So that, that just makes it a lot easier to not have miscommunication.
Okay. But, but we are now officially recycling again?
Yes, the recycling should be occurring. I can't speak to any one instance where they're mixing it together.
No, I, I get that, but I just want to be able to get the message out to like all the people in my neighborhood that when we go to these HOA meetings, we are recycling.
Yeah, there's, there's four or five surrounding cities that are not recycling, you know, Pembroke Pines being one of them, they're, they're directing all of their waste and recycling to the Waste to Energy Plant. But we do have an outlet for your recycling. We take it to the Rooter's Facility and it is separated and recycled to the best of my knowledge through Waste Management.
Okay. So.
So I'm gonna continue on the pylon on mixed messaging. So your drivers, I have to say, you must, you must hire them for their friendly personality because they're always nice guys, they're always polite and respectful. And I ask a lot of questions, they don't know who I am, at least I don't think so. And, you know, back about a month or so ago, we were really hearing at the HOA meetings that there was one truck going down the road taking it all. So I ask you guys, oh, we would never do that. And where there might be a mixed message is if your one-arm truck that you normally use for recycling is down, they told me that you'll use a regular garbage truck to do the recycling. So if somebody sees the regular truck come up with a little flipper on the back, they're probably thinking that their stuff's going off to the dump. And as they were saying, we have people that are really passionate. I can introduce you to the person who started recycling in Southwest Ranches. And the last thing she wants to hear is her stuff is going to the dump.
Every community has, has at least 10.
Yeah, the mayor was talking about coconuts. Your own guys over the years have given me completely different advice. Never put it in a bag, then the next crew, yeah, yeah, we'll take it away in a bag. And then the last guy who I asked, because I put out three bags of coconuts, so they stayed there and I brought them in and put them back out and three times hauling those coconuts got pretty annoying.
Yeah.
Those guys said, just put them in a garbage pail, we'll see exactly what they are, we'll take them away. And I haven't had a problem since. So I don't know if it's a training issue, communications issue, your guys need just a book to refer to so that they're all consistent in terms of what they're saying. But these messages, the changes, the differences, the, the mixed messages that, that they're giving the community, we hear about it. We go to all the HOA meetings, a lot of the board, all the board meetings, and we hear it all the time from the groups of people in our community, how, you know, how they're told all different things, it just depends on who the person de jour is.
Yeah. Again, point really well taken, you know, with the, we are moving people around at an unprecedented rate right now because of the absences and, and, and all of the things. But even before, you know, COVID and that, it's, it's an area that we, we could do a lot better, spend more time coming to these meetings, publish, this is the system. But then, again, when that is the system you go with, everybody has to understand that that's the system. Because undoubtedly, every time, not necessarily here, I'm talking grand scheme in my career, hey, this is the system, this is the rules. Oh, I didn't know. Can you come out and get it? Can you do this? Can you do that? And that will just continue on. So there, there has to be the support of, of, hey, if we wanna have clear messaging, we all gotta be on the same page, that this is gonna be the messaging and, and, and we gotta stick with that.
Yeah, I can't tell you how many articles that the town staff have put in the town newsletter on these topics as well as all of us.
Yeah.
A lot of us write columns every month and probably twice a year, each one of us are mentioning the trash and, you know, the rules of the road, so to speak. So I don't know if the town is, is coming down on the wrong side of the messaging. I really believe it's the guys on the backs of the truck. And I don't wanna blame anybody, but it's a consistent message that they need to be trained on.
Absolutely. It's, it's supervision, the driver, the helper, I mean, they.
Your company.
Company, yes. I mean, we, we, we need to understand what it is and enforce and that's gonna be the best way to educate the public as well.
You're, you're one of the owners and you're hearing it from us, so now we expect change.
Yep, understood.
Yeah. Russell, once again, thank you. Appreciate you coming out. I appreciate you hearing firsthand. I'll say if, if, if you're not returning the calls, we're next in line. So we've heard all the calls. So, but thank you for coming out and, and we look forward to, yeah, seeing, seeing some change.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you for the comments from the, from the public as well and we'll work on solutions.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Public comments.
Sure, Mayor, we have six tonight.
Great.
The first one is Pavit Paul McCarr, followed by Joseph Alchul, followed by Noel Hollingsworth.
Hi, everyone. I am Pavit Paul Singh from the Sick Youth Association and I am here to give some exciting news and updates about our upcoming 5K event. So we are closing in on the final month of our fourth annual Unity and Diversity 5K Run and Walk on April 9th, 2022 at Rolling Oaks Park. So all proceeds of the event will benefit the town's College Scholarship Fund and we are, we are making huge strides towards our attendance and fundraising goals and are glad to be working with countless community organizations and businesses to organize this event. We are especially excited to be working with the town and its residents to pull off another memorable and engaging 5K event. We encourage all of you to post about the 5K on your social media platforms and promote the event amongst your family, friends, coworkers, et cetera. The success of this community event is made possible by the continued support and enthusiasm of community members just like you. So keep it up and it will, it will come to fruition through our 5K. And flyers have been printed and are placed at the entry table. And if you are interested in registering for the race or donating towards the cause, please scan the QR code on our flyer for the run signup link and contributions of any size and form are welcome and appreciated. You could also learn more about the Sick Youth Association at the sick youth association.org, a new website that we launched, so I encourage everyone to check it out and refer it to your family and friends. And we hope to see you all on April 9th. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Really appreciate always the, all the hard work I know that you all put into that to make it happen, make it a reality. And it's always been an amazing event for town, really bringing everybody together. Thank you. Yep, absolutely. Okay, next.
Sure, that's Joseph Alchul. You wanna speak?
No.
Okay, perfect. Noel Hollingsworth, followed. Noel Hollingsworth, followed by Ruben Allen.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Last night at the, I was listening to the mayor's discussion that he has and I do not converse during that.
I finally found out how to keep Noel quiet, get him on the phone with a bunch of residents. I don't know, I can't get him to talk.
Anyway. Because I, I can talk to Steve anytime I want. I want people that generally would not, you know, broach the subject with him in person to be able to scream at him on the phone. So, but I heard last night that at the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, the proposed developer of Overland Masters Academy have proposed some changes and some deed restrictions. Academy have proposed some changes and some deed restrictions, et cetera, for that in order not to get the Rural Ranches Plus put in. And I thought immediately of the future Domino's. He is buying a portion of the area that is going to be sold by Masters Academy because he couldn't afford the entire nut at one time. By doing this, he avoids the Rural Ranches Plus scenario, he, he believes. And, but it does not, the next one, at the last meeting when he was here, on the outside, when I was sitting outside, I heard him discussing with an individual, I believe it was him, saying that, well, we'll, we'll go through this on this one here, but the next one is when we'll make the big profit because we'll only have Rural Ranches. So they, that which they said they were going to do for this acreage on the first part, they're not going to do on the next one because they won't have Rural Ranches Plus to have to deal with. And I think to look at the, how the Domino's are going to fall down the road is very indicative of how we need to look at Rural Ranches Plus. I am definitely for Rural Ranches Plus being put into effect. And I think a lot of shade was given to the Homeowners Association and put forth only one side of the, of the coin. The other side is you go for this side of the coin and you're gonna get hosed on the other side. And that's exactly the way, the way I see it. Because he's a developer. He's going to make the maximum amount of money with the minimum amount of space. So he'll be able to put in what he wants on the future pieces that he purchases if he's the purchaser. And not be able to come forward on this one. I'll take the lesser amount of money this time and I'll make it up on the backend on the other property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Allen, followed by Mary Ann Allen, and final speaker is Jason Hallberg.
Uh, good evening. Again, we stand here humbly and promoted you and, uh, thank you all for the service that you provide to the community. Um, I never knew that we had so much problem with the trash, though. I never had a problem with the trash. So, um, so for me, it's, it's fine. Um, the services that I always got in here, they were, they've been the best that I ever had in any of the communities that I've lived in here in South Florida before. Um, whatever he chooses he has, it's fine. But, but anyhow, so, so I, I'll start by, by approaching again you guys in regards to the issue that we had with the contractor that is working on the drainage, work on 162nd Avenue. And I'll start saying that Keith is gonna probably like it. You're right. Uh, the insurance doesn't get into the town. Um, so if, if you can, then I'll, I'll approach it differently. Uh, we, we're standing here, all of us in this room, and we pledge the allegiance. And in those words, we said, for justice. So I will ask any of you guys, is it just for me to pay for I did, what I did not cause? Contractor is there. The contractor is the one who causes the, the, the damage. And, and I stand in front of you guys in here, and the only one paying for this is me and my family. God bless America. I don't need the money. Thank you. But I do wanna make sure that I don't have to pay for something that is not my fault. Like in any car accident that we have, or any auto accident that we have, we pay, the police report, write the report, and it pays whoever is at fault pays for that. So in this case, I was not in the house. I was not driving the backhoe. And I stand in front of you guys, uh, for, for justice to see if you expect me to pay for that. Talking about $20,000 and, and change, something around that, that nature with all the appliances and the grievances that I had to go through. It's been 10 weeks now. I don't have the insurance company that calls me back. I don't have the contractor that calls me back. Uh, I've done some research, uh, on the contractor. I've done some research on the insurance, and they don't seem to be the best, uh, in town. Uh, so that's my, my understanding of the situation. Uh, no, no adjuster has come to my house. No one has visited my house. No one has asked me about my conditions in the house. If this would have happened on this building, and then, and then what we can do, it happens to be a contractor. So if, if this would have happened on this building, Keith, and I ask you humbly to you, what would you have done?
Well, just go ahead. We.
You respond later, okay. So, so then the point is that if, if, if the contractor, if the insurance doesn't pay, you guys have the instrument on your contract, and Keith might validate for, for me that, and I have another minute. So I can validate for me that you have on your contract with your contractor, Rod, that if they cause any damages to any, anything, they are responsible. You guys have an instrument with the contractor to write a negative change order, a negative change order to the contractor for the damages that I'm, uh, questioning in here. And then you take that money away from him. And that's as simple as it can be. If you would have been in here on your property, and this individual would have broken, so done some damages to your property in here, and the insurance carrier will be saying, we don't care, what would you guys do? And all I'm asking is that you guys have justice in here. Because I don't wanna end up paying for this. And I don't wanna be bothering you guys either. Uh, you guys provide a service. You guys provide a service for free. You do a lot for this community, which I love. And I don't wanna be in here and uncomfortable. You guys, make you guys uncomfortable. But at the same time, I just wanna make the point. At any given time, you can tell me, just don't bother us anymore, and I'll go and keep my life and, you know. And I appreciate again, uh, to listen to you. And, and Keith, if you can, it, it, these days, you know, as an attorney, I can get free advice from you. I don't have to pay. I, I'll take it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann Allen, Sunshine Ranches. I have a public service announcement to make for all our farms. And you're gonna understand why it's so important. And if you could indulge me, I'm speaking for several people that have animals, horses, chickens, goats. We just have to know every day that's another shit show. I'm sorry to say that word, but it is. When, 10 years ago, I was paying $20 for a 130-pound bale of hay for my horses. Today, it's $49, and I'm only getting 100 pounds. I can afford to feed my horses, but a lot of people can't at these prices. The other thing is the grocery store shelves. I don't know if you've noticed, but they're starting to get scarce, sparse. Certain things aren't even available anymore. And they've been telling us for two years, we're going to have food shortages. This is, you know, everybody pay attention now what they're telling us. Last year, farms were being ordered to turn their crops in and not bring them to market. Dairy milk was being dumped by the thousands of gallons down drains. Whether this is a contrived shortage or whatever, we're going to go through a shortage. Now, what happens with food shortages? We know. We go through hurricanes. Within hours, the stores are stripped. You know that. And one day, if we're having a hurricane come in, there's nothing left in the grocery stores. I've been in those lineups years ago, and I learned my lesson. Prepare. What happens when the supply change, uh, the supply chain breaks down? What happens when food doesn't come in? Most average people don't keep more than three days' worth of food in their refrigerators. And it brings us to Southwest Ranches. What happens when you have food riots, food shortages? Where are they gonna come to look for food? Where does anybody go? Oh, where's, where are the farms? Where are the animals? Last year, we had chickens being stolen out of our residents' homes. We've had, one of the people that came up said he had lost cows that were butchered. And I'm gonna speak on a topic I, that I know very well, is called horse butchering, which is still going on in Florida. It's going on in Ocala. It's going on all through Florida. And we've had a horse here killed a few years ago in Southwest Ranches, and I believe you remember. Um, the newspaper article that I'd like you to look at is, um, one of the protests that we did in Miami when they finally caught two of these butchers. And I'm gonna tell you how graphic it gets. They will kill the animals slowly. Doesn't matter. They hack it, and then they take off the parts that they need. One of the mayor's, that the owner came and saw in the morning, her four-year, four-month-old baby was still nursing on the carcass that was hacked to pieces. A little 10-year-old girl came to see her horse, which she does every morning before she goes to school, to find it skinned and butchered. She'll never get over the trauma of that. This is the reality of the new reality that we're in with shortages, with meat prices being so high. If you'll indulge me for just a few more minutes. We have now 3 million illegal aliens that are in this country, and more are coming in all the time. There's no work. There is no food. Look at the prices are so high. We are going to see this come to our area again. And I want to tell you the best way that we can prevent a lot of these horrible crimes happening. Neighborhood watches. You know, we have barn watches, and they have signs all through Davie. I went and testified in Davie, uh, during the horse butchering that we were having, uh, during this period of time that you'll see in the newspaper. And Davie held, uh, many meetings regarding this. And the most effective way is if neighbors, look out for neighbors. That is, you see a car parked by your neighbor's farm, taking pictures. Well, they're casing the place. They're seeing what animals are there. If you see anything suspicious, a car parked at night where it shouldn't be, a car parked during the day looking at the animals, please take note. Take a, go take a picture of their license plate, or better yet, the police have told us, call them. If something doesn't look right, it's not right. All right? And it's coming. It's coming. And I would rather you be proactive than reactive, that when it's already here, maybe make up some committees for safety issues. We had Antifa just last year.
Yeah.
That, while, while we were threatened, and I want to say our town council stepped up and had more police patrols come through. So being proactive and seeing what could happen, how we're gonna react to it, I think would be wonderful. And I want to just, in closing, say, the reason we're a town is because we preserve, we protect, and we promote our farms. And you're gonna find out real shortly how important our farms are to the community. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Mary Ann. Jim, you may wanna note that for your safety committee, actually. Some, some thoughts there.
If, if I could, Mayor, address Mary Ann real quick. We have a meeting here at Town Hall. We've had two already. I'd invite you to look at the calendar, see when it is, and come. It's a Public Safety and, and Traffic Committee. And any ideas from the residents, I'd be absolutely happy to have them. So just please come and, and participate. That's all. Thank you.
Joseph?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Jason Hallberg. Forgot who wanted to speak last.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, Jason Hallberg, on Thoroughbred Lane. Um, I just wanted to give a quick update on behalf of the HOA. Uh, this is the Sunshine Ranches HOA. So we have a couple of events. Uh, one is, there's, uh, our annual elections is coming up on March 30th. And, uh, anyone from Sunshine Ranches, uh, who's a member, please come out and cast your vote for the new board. Um, we also have, uh, another, what we call Party at the Park. Uh, it's a really fun event. Uh, it's for, you know, our community. We also are pretty open to anyone that, you know, is part of our, also extended family that wants to come in and join. We usually have, uh, we have lots of food. We'll have, um, uh, some animals, uh, from, from a rescue there. Um, we'll have police and fire doing some demos. And again, this is our second one, and, uh, the first one was a huge success. It's a great way to get the community together. Uh, that'll be on Sunday, April 10th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Um, then we had also, in our last HOA meeting, we had two topics I just wanna touch on real quickly. One is, uh, what Noel had mentioned, uh, was the, uh, proposed development, um, at the corner of Hancock and Griffin. The, uh, I have to say that there was a extremely positive, uh, um, acceptance from the community on, uh, what he's proposed. Um, partly, I think, because he's actually reached out to a lot of the individual folks in the community, the HOA, to find out what's compatible, uh, what works with this community and what fits. Um, I know that, uh, there's also some, uh, there's a zoning in progress in place right now, um, which there's discussions of this idea about Rural Ranches Plus. And, uh, we tried to touch on that, but it is a complicated topic. Uh, unless, you know, you really understand some of the land use, uh, and you understand some of the nuances, you know, in five minutes, uh, it is difficult for everybody to kind of like quickly catch up on, on, uh, becoming a, like a Jeff Katums. So, um, but one thing that I, I wanted to, to highlight is that we appreciate the town, myself, you guys, as a council, looking after our town and trying to keep it rural. And what I mean by rural is that, you know, when you look at it from a 20,000-foot view, literally, that's not a figure of speech, from Google Earth, and you look at Southwest Ranches and its borders, you see green. You don't see that gray. And the, I know what, you know, our goal, hopefully, is to kind of keep that as much as possible. The issue that I think that's come about with the Rural Ranches Plus is that mathematically, it doesn't accomplish that. So what do I mean by that? If you took a 10-acre parcel and you divide it, can I get just another minute? And you divide it into four lots, and you took a same 10-acre parcel and you divide it into five lots. So the four lots would be 2.5 acres. The five lots would be two acres, net acres, till 10, right? The footprint for the house, if you were to build at 10% the maximum size, which most builders are gonna maximize their opportunity, it's exactly the same footprint for that 10 acres. And then the same thing for the open space. If you look at all the open space that's not being built on for that same 10-acre plot, it's the same amount of land. So I, what I'd like to say is, continue this thought process. Continue working through this. And maybe it needs a little tweak. But I think you guys are on the right track. And I think, as Noel says, you know, there's something that, that needs to come through here and, uh, you know, just needs to be maybe retweaked a little bit. So I appreciate what you guys are doing and, uh, you know, keep it up. So thank you. Oh, lastly, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, Joseph, our new chair for the comp board. I think he's gonna hold the reins really well and do a fantastic job. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Congratulations, Joseph.
All right, awesome. Is that, uh, the last speaker? Great, thank you. All right. Board reports.
Any board reports this evening?
You're the star tonight, Joseph. Come on.
Yes.
You can't, you can't pass up.
I told you, I think, I think you guys have already heard more than enough from me tonight. But, uh, again, Joseph Altshul, Southwest 164 Terrace. Uh, our big consideration was the, um, Rural Ranches Plus at the comp board meeting. Uh, I, I think it was, um, a- a- actually, I happen to think it's a very good idea. I think it was very positively received by the comp plan board. And, and I think that, that each of us would like to see it go forward within the, the council. I think there might be some different thoughts on, on how it works. Um, you know, while technically 10% is 10%, you know, if you have this 10-acre plot and you have four houses versus five houses, even if you have 10% and 10%, having one less home is going to make a difference. It's gonna make a difference in traffic. It's gonna make a difference in, in, in every, you know, numbers of residents. I think it'll make a difference across the board. But, but, uh, anyway, everything, uh, everything went well at our meeting. We started to go through the, through, through the, um, ne- next future planning, and we'll continue to do that. We'll continue to serve for any questions, issues, anything that the council would like us to consider. Thank you. Any questions for me?
We're good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. Um, our actual meeting is the 15th of this month, so my, uh, report wouldn't have changed from last month, other than the fact that we are working on the, you know, the grass situation as well, et cetera. Um, I would like to shout out for Joseph. He's actually been a member, a resident of this town for a long time, and owner for a long time. He's a great guy. He stepped up to the, you know, to the, the chair of the comp board. So he's, he's doing an excellent job. He was, he was a sleeper on the board, but he's, he's stepped up. He's doing really well. He's, he's excellent. Um, on another note, um, with regards to Astronite Foundation, um, we had our meeting the other night, and Winston, everybody knows Winston, he's been on the board for a very long time, since its conception with Astronite. He's actually moving out of town. He's following his family, uh, up north. So it's sad to see him go. We're gonna miss him. He's still gonna be involved in the board as much as he can. to be involved in the board as much as he can. But yeah, sad to see him go. We had an election of officers. Some of the officers changed. Rick Bell is going to remain the president, new vice president, George Morris, and Barbara Gonzalez for secretary. We're working on a few things, trying to support the farmers market and come up with ideas and things of that nature. We're also, you know, dealing with the carnival and talking about the upcoming shows and events that are coming. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, George.
Oh, and I forgot. Yes, Bingo. We're working also Bingo. We're very excited to start implementing Bingo again. We're talking sometime in June. We don't have the exact date, but everybody look forward to Bingo Night once again.
Are you going to be the caller at Bingo?
Certainly, absolutely.
Because if you have not experienced George Morris as the Bingo caller, then you have not been to Bingo.
There you go.
It's not worth it with anybody else.
Better or smart blank than a, anyhow, I won't say it. Thank you.
Thanks, George. All right. Any other board reports? All right, seeing none. Council member comments?
I'll go.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Kick things off, start things rolling. Just thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you for all the comments. And I want to thank Waste Pro for coming here and hearing it firsthand from all of us. That I think will help a lot, you know, at that. Just a few items of note that are coming up. We have this Saturday, we have two events going on at the barn. We have hazmat, with shredding and drug prescription drop-off in the morning. And then we have the barn dance. And unfortunately, the chair of the Trotter Review Committee couldn't be here tonight, because she's in the barn with a whole bunch of other ladies, working very hard. I was just there before I got here. And there was a lot of activity, and it's going to be a really great event. But anyway, that's coming up on Saturday night. The Broward County Property Appraiser is going to be here on the 17th, from 10 to 12. We do have the 5K that was previously mentioned. We have in Rolling Oaks at the barn on the 2nd of April, the egg hunt. We're going to have the bunny there at 11:00 a.m. for pictures. The actual hunt starts at 12:00, 12 noon. Please bring your own Easter basket empty, because you're going to leave with it full. The hunters are going to leave with it full. And the bunny will be there throughout the day for pictures. And Bob has graciously volunteered to do his wonder of magic with photography. And a big shout out to his wife, Nancy, who is the bunny handler and controls the crowd control for the bunny. So it's great, because the bunny doesn't talk, thank God. So, so all of that is going on. That's on the 2nd of April. And this coming Sunday, just an FYI, daylight savings time, we lose an hour. Just a reminder. Two other things I want to talk about just real quick, and then I'll sign off. One is, the Parks Board had a discussion on what to call the town five-acre own parcel. They came up with the suggestion that I had made on calling it the Preserve, the Green Meadows Preserve. And so I think we should endorse that, not because I came up with it, because it's just, I just don't like hearing the town-owned five acres. So we would have two areas. We'd have Green Meadow Sanctuary, which we all know would be the park. And then we have the town-owned five acres, which we would call the Green Meadows Preserve, which eventually it'll all probably get shortened down to Sanctuary and Preserve somewhere down the line. And I'm not going to take away your thunder, and I'm going to ask all my colleagues not to do that either, to let the mayor make his big announcement when that comes up. The other thing, and the Preserve, you know, the Preserve part, the naming, that's, I don't know if we need an actual vote on that or anything like that.
I don't know if we need an actual vote, but I think it's a great idea, and appreciate it's an awesome name. I think we should just kind of reaffirm it here, make sure that we're all.
I don't know. I have a vision of a sign.
Before you do.
Too far.
Okay.
Just want to clarify. I thought what came out of was the Southwest Meadows.
That's what I thought.
Preserve, not Green Meadows Preserve.
Semantics, yeah.
Before you memorialize that, I just want to make sure we're correct.
I love the Green Meadows part.
Why, whatever.
I guess.
I don't know, though. I always envision a sign that says this town's five acres up there.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, that's what we've called it for.
Andy, however you want to phrase it, rock and roll. As long as the last word is preserved.
Southwest Meadows, Southwest Meadows Preserve.
Yeah.
And Southwest Meadows Sanctuary.
Sanctuary. I think it'll help clear up a lot of, you know, future discussions.
Hopefully, in the future years, we can remember the name better than we can in this evening.
Yeah. Hey, I gave it my best shot. The last item I want to talk about is, we're fortunate enough to have one of our really, really nice residents, who's done a lot of work for us, come back, come back living in town. I'm talking about Marie Nix. She's back here permanently from her work up in the center of the state. And she's requested to go back on the Parks Board. We took her off because she was, she at her request, because she was out of town and couldn't attend the meetings. And I'd like to put her back on as an at-large. And that'll give the board nine members. And she always, you know, participates. And I think I have to make a motion for that. I have to make a motion for that. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Great.
Yep. Is there any discussion on this item? I'm super excited about it. You're a great member of the board.
I am very excited.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any resident comment on the item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
And on that note, thank you, gentlemen. I'm out of gas.
All right, awesome. I'll go next.
Okay.
So there's something, I've actually gotten a couple of phone calls on the discussions that have been going on on the Masters Academy property, on why the council isn't checking in on this. And I want to make it clear, I mean, we generally don't offer up our opinions at board meetings and HOA meetings, because, you know, we're concerned about sunshine. But this goes much further than sunshine. When we sit up here for quasi-judicial items, that last word is key. We're more or less sitting up here as judges. So if we're listening to the Sunshine Ranches HOA meeting, which, very informative, glad to hear from everybody, we really can't check in on it, because if I gave my opinion that I felt one way or the other, when it comes to a council vote, I'd have to recuse. Because if I'm sitting as a judge, I really have to judge the merits of the proposal that the contractor makes to the town when he comes for the hearings. So I just want to make it clear, because I know a lot of people don't realize that that's the case here. So we can't talk about that. We really can't talk about that amongst too many people, other than the attorney and the town planner, to get information, to get, you know, additional backup if it's necessary. But I want that to be clear. We certainly care about what's going on, and we've, you know, taken actions to try to protect the rural lifestyle with respect to developers, but not on a specific piece of property. We can't work that way. We have to sit here impartially, hear the evidence, weigh the evidence, and make our decision on what's presented and within the context of the law. So I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. It's why we're very mute when it comes to anything to do with land use changes or zoning changes. We just, we can't talk about it, except for when it's a publicly noticed meeting with that on the agenda. Couple of other things I wanted to mention. Today was the monthly MPO meeting, and there's some interesting things going on with the MPO, with all this money flooding in from the federal government. They're actually going to finish, or start, or get the intercoastal dredged out. This is the longest-running project in Broward County. They started on this 28 years ago.
Wow.
Yeah. It's all environmental stuff.
Right.
But when they're talking about physically picking up and moving manatees, so that the manatees are not in the way of the dredge machines that come through, it's, I guess that's why it took 28 years, maybe. Took that long to figure out how to move a manatee. But it's mostly environmental details. But, and then the next part is, it's an eight-year-long project. The reason this came up today is they were looking to provide oversight, so that when the contractor comes through, they know the manatees are, you know, out of the way, the water turbidity doesn't get to be too bad. So there's, they're finally at that last phase where they're signing the last contracts to get this project going. And they're promising that it's going to start within the next two years. So if you're a boater in Broward County, pay attention to the Coast Guard advisories on what's going on, because I doubt they'll be closing the intercoastal. But I know in certain cases, when they've done dredging down in Dade County, it becomes a nightmare if you're trying to come and go with your boat. When they did that down at Homestead, they dredged the canal out, and for two weeks, you really couldn't get out. So just pay attention. I wanted to bring that up for the boaters. The other thing that they were discussing is, right now dues for the MPO is between 8 and 10 cents per resident, per municipality, which, I mean, it's a bargain. We pay $636 to the MPO yearly for our membership dues. Well, the auditors were in today saying we're at a line in Broward County compared to the other municipalities. And then they started telling us what some of these other municipalities pay. Now Orlando County pays 50 cents a resident. And I don't know how many people live in Orlando, but that's a lot. And that would raise our price to about almost $4,000. Then they brought up how in Dade County, the county commission pays $100,000 per commission seat, and there's $100,000 per municipality fee. I'll be voting against that proposal if it comes up. That's insane. I mean, to take us, but what the discussion was today is they're going to basically do a survey and a study on what would be fair in Broward County, given what their costs are. Essentially, all they use it for in Broward County is, Keith, what's a better word for lobbying?
That's a good one.
Well, that's effectively what it is, but they have another.
Influencer.
Well, influencing, that goes to a different direction. But essentially, that's all they use it for. The cost of the MPO are percentages of all the projects they do. So they're well-funded. But we'll see where this goes. Something else I wanted to mention, everybody, is that once upon a time, we used to hear about Freddie telling us that he couldn't vote. Dee said the same thing. That's all changed with the pandemic, believe it or not.
Really?
Yeah, we do, you can do the meetings now either onsite, or you can do them on Zoom. You're limited to only a certain number of Zooms per year. They want you really there. But basically, since only, they only get 25 votes, and that's in Florida statute. There's 32 members all in, including the Broward County Commissioners, and somebody from FDOT, et cetera. Usually, only 19 to 22 people show up. So I've been a voting member as long as I've been on, so it's like two years now. So that's a good thing.
That's great.
Yeah, we have a say, you know. And honestly, you know, whether I voted or not, they're very welcoming on any kind of feedback on any of the projects going on, or if you want to promote something like our projects. I talked to them about a while ago. We do have input now. So I'm very happy with that. Something else that they're doing that's interesting, but I don't think it affects us, but I may be wrong. Emily's more the expert on the MPO than Bob ever will be. But they have the LAP program, the LAP program, and that is basically a program that is being set up for use of federal money on projects. So the overhead, the administrative overhead on state and federal projects is pretty high. There's all kinds of reports you need to fill out. There's tons of documentation that needs to be provided. The point behind this, and basically Hollywood, Plantation, and Pompano started this new organization. It's called the Mayor's and Elected Officials something, something. Sorry. I heard about it today for the first time. But the point is that they're all putting up $100,000 apiece. Now, big cities like those three, those are the biggest in Broward, minus Fort Lauderdale, they're all putting up money to get this started. If we wanted to join this, if it made sense from a feasibility standpoint, it would cost us 50,000 entry, and then 25,000 a year. And the benefit to us is, we would be able to use the resources from this new group to do all of those types of administrative filings with the state and federal government. So there's a reduction in our overhead costs. But now, you have to have a five-year commitment. Most of our projects are one, maybe two years. I'm not aware of any federal money we've used so far. Have we, Emily, ever attracted federal dollars for our projects?
No.
Okay. So I didn't hear anything that said, hey, bring up a vote tonight. We really need to jump into this. I'll continue to monitor it, and depending on what we're going to do. And, you know, a five-year commitment for a lot of the cities, the smaller cities, is a tough nut.
Yeah.
Because if you've only got a two-year project, what's the point? If you're a regular recipient like Fort Lauderdale, or Pompano, or Hollywood, it makes complete sense. It's a way for them to save some money. So with that said, that's basically my report for this evening. Thank you, folks.
Great. Thank you, folks.
Oh, and by the way, for the record, for the people out there in YouTube land, tonight we had the best we've had in a long time in terms of the number of residents that showed up. And thank you for coming out.
All right, next. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David.
David Kozinski, District Four. I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's really important. And it feels good when we see residents coming out to our meetings, showing up in person. I've got about five items I want to discuss. Let me give you the warm and fuzzy one, is the 184th Bonaventure Bridge that crosses the C-11. We're making progress on a designated equestrian path across that bridge, both sides of the C-11. It's property, Southwest Ranches property. And a lot of our equestrians really like to ride on both sides of that canal. So a designated path across that 184th bridge. I spoke with the mayor of Weston not too long ago, and it looks like that's coming to fruition. Let's see. I'll go through my list here. The Tis Dorps projects, right now, they're in progress for South, oh, Tis Door, so I let everybody know. Transportation, surface, drainage, ongoing rehabilitation. A great project that was initiated by, at the time, council member Steve Brakers, but now mayor. But great project. It's a very popular program with the town. And these funds are being funded with Broward County Surtax, Southwest 120th Avenue, Southwest 130th Avenue, Southwest 133rd Avenue, Lupo Lane, and Holatay Trail. Those projects are in progress. I monitor Holatay Trail every day as I'm driving on the road every day. Let's see that. That out. Recently in the news, on Local 10, a neighbor had a little problem with a burglary on 188th. And it was really bothersome in how the, he sells motorcycles and ATVs. And from the initiation, he was on a Facebook page that, where he made contact with a buyer, is what I'm going to say in quotation marks. And he was set up from the very beginning. He was told that, hey, he had a buyer, wanted to buy some of his items. Hey, let's meet over at this place X, no show. Place Y, no show. Hey, let me show up at your home. Well, while the buyer was at his home, he was actually scamming his home. And over $65,000 of property was stolen from him in a two-hour period when our resident was out of the country. So Jeff Holbliss mentioned that if we are, if one of our residents is looking to sell items like this resident, Davie Police will be more than happy to meet with you in the parking lot of Town Hall to make that transaction. Don't let them into your home. Don't let them into your property unless you really, really know these folks. Because there are people that are looking to scam our residents left and right. And we're, we got a lot of good folks in our town. And to be preyed upon by this unscrupulous individual is just, it's shameful. But Davie Police will meet you in the parking lot to make sure that you have a very safe transaction. And dovetailing into that, before I was elected here, and actually, before I was president of the Sunshine Ranches HOA, I had a neighbor a couple houses away, Mo Hanif. He came to me, he was like, probably the second person I met when I moved here in 97. And Mo told me one day that, you know, he was leaving his home, and he saw some folks that were fishing outside of the canal, outside of his home. Didn't think anything of it. He went out of town, came back and found his storage shed, separate from his home, completely wiped out, stole it over 40. from his home, completely wiped out, stole over $14,000 of power tools. So I really, at that point, and starting to get involved with Sunshine Ranches HOA, I started making an effort that if I see somebody suspicious, that, you know, they may be doing good. Not necessarily that everybody fishing on the side of the shores is bad. But, you know, if Davie Police goes by and does an ID check, not necessarily a bad thing that, you know, maybe these folks will say, hey, maybe I don't need to do that. And adding on top of that is the license plate readers is a potential funding issue for us. I think that will also help protect our residents. And last, Bob had touched on voting, and I kind of remembered something else that came up. We have elections coming up in November, and both Gary and Bob have announced that they are seeking reelection. And, but there are additional elections that are gonna be on the ballot. I learned from another source that there have been instances where your voter registration has changed, and we don't know why. So it wouldn't hurt to log on the Broward County Supervisor of Elections website. Just double-check your ballot before it gets to the last point and you're going to vote, and you're all of a sudden to find your voting registration changed. I heard that a resident was actually moved to Miramar, and they still live here. So double-check your voting registration. Make sure you're still registered to vote here, because we want you to vote. Mr. Mayor, that wraps up for me.
Great. Thank you, David.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I really see a nice crowd here this evening, and I think it'll pick up more and more as, you know, as things go, and more issues are brought in, such as tonight. I know there was a lot of trash talking going on, but I think it was great to have the company here and to have the residents here to speak what they had to say. We had a meeting two weeks ago on Saturday, a lot of trash talking going on there. Also, we have a representative that's going to go out for proposals. She's working real hard to send out proposals for the town. So anytime that the residents can show up and put input into that, I think it's great. The traffic and safety, Mary Ann, it's the first Tuesday of each month, all right? It starts at 7:00, and we absolutely encourage you to show up. I've talked to residents in Green Meadows that are out doing their morning walk, and they come up with all kinds of suggestions on what they would like to see and wouldn't like to see. And I tell them, come, come to the meeting, and let's see if we can't put some of that down on paper. We were very fortunate to have the chief of police from Davie here, answered 100 million questions that were asked, very, very informative meeting, I thought it was. So these are the things we're looking to do and see if we can't, you know, slow down some of the burglaries and slow down some of that, and especially slow down the traffic. You heard Bob mention the MPO. He sits on that board. I'm with the Broward League of Cities. We have a directors' meeting once a month, then we have our general membership meeting coming up next week. But the Board of Directors, there's a lot of talk going on about the monies that Bob was talking about, about the money coming down from Washington. It's not millions, it's trillions, trillions of dollars that is being turned out for, you know, development, roads, bridges, you name it, it's there. And I think we got one of the best staffs around in any town that goes after that money. They really and truly, wholeheartedly do everything they can, and we'll be discussing some of that later this evening. There's a lot of bad bills in Tallahassee. I read today on the report from the Florida League of Cities, and some of the bills that are going through, if they go through, our home rule will be destroyed. We won't have a say as to what happens, who comes, who does what. Can you imagine people that are applying to live in a residential area, a strip club, an ammunition store, and an automobile repair shop in residential area? That'd be right next to your next-door neighbor. These are the things that people are applying for, and these type of bills, if they go through and they pass, it would give them the right to do that. So you can see that Tallahassee's not our friend, and we really have to fight as hard as we can. So anything that comes up on the ballot, I just absolutely ask that you look at it real hard and make sure it's the best for our town. And last, I'd like to close out the Gary Apolikoff Founder's Park. I don't know if any of y'all have ever noticed, but there, right behind the drugstore, CVS, is a big wall, and it's being painted. The Rural Arts Board was given permission to paint six panels there, and the lady from Southwest Ranches here is actually one of the artists, or is the artist that's painting it. And when it's done, I think you'll see that it's very, very representative of what this town is about. I'd love to see the whole wall painted, but that gets expensive, and now all we have to do is keep people from vandalizing it. But it's really pretty. When you head out and you're headed east, look at that wall and see if it doesn't make a big difference. So that's all I got, Mayor, and thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim. Just to reinforce a lot of the good things you said, but I'll just reinforce the one from Tallahassee, home rule, it is being just obliterated. It doesn't exist anymore. It's a real shame, because nobody, you know, nobody is more accountable to the residents of the town than your local officials like us, you know? And when the state tries to, you know, push rules for the entire state on, that they think is gonna fit on a town like, a city like Pembroke Pines, and also fit on a town like Southwest Ranches, you know what? One size does not fit all. It's a real shame. It really is. And it's something that is going to affect you personally. It's not, it's not just a nebulous thing up there. It's a very unfortunate what's happening. And, you know, we're, we have lobbyists up there, but it's kind of a steamroller. It's underway, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to deal with. But we'll get there when we get there.
I wanted to respond. Ruben, appreciate again you coming out this evening. Andy, I'd like to ask that we get involved in that from the standpoint, Ruben, I know you and I have talked, that the town is not going to get, you know, be the one to pay for the damages, because that's not how the contract is written, and that's not how it's supposed to go. But Andy, I think that we have given enough time to the vendor to do the right thing. From what I'm hearing from Ruben, they are not cooperating at all. The insurance company that they work with is not cooperating at all. It's basically a solid wall for Ruben. So I think from our perspective, we need to start bringing it up with the vendor. We need to start applying some pressure and see what, if we can get this vendor to do the right thing. Okay. I wanted to bring up, we had, one of the things that I learned at the, at the trash talk we had the other Saturday, was the fact that I always thought that the limitation that we had for picking up debris, you know, we have, we have this, what I felt was in the contract, where if I cut the debris and I put it out there, the vendor will pick it up. But if you have somebody else cut it, you know, if you're paying somebody to maintain your yard, and they put your debris out on the side of the road, it's, they're not gonna pick it up if they figure it out. I always thought that was in the contract, but it's not. It's actually an ordinance of the town. I didn't realize that, actually, till that, till that meeting. I just personally don't think that's fair. I think as, you know, I love maintaining my property. It may not be the best-maintained property in the ranches, because I'm not that skilled at it. But it's my time to relax. It's my time to frankly enjoy the ranches. I've been doing it for 27 years, and nothing relaxes me, honestly, sincerely, like getting on my riding mower and running around in circles for two and a half hours. I love it. So, but, you know, someday, and then, you know, and we get out there and we cut the tree, cut back the trees, trim the trees, and do the whole nine yards. I enjoy that. But, you know, the day is gonna come where I physically won't be able to do that. And it's still gonna be the same amount of debris. It's still going to need to be picked up. And why? Because I might have to have some, pay somebody to do it in 15 years. All of a sudden, the town's not gonna pick it up, versus when I do it myself, they will. It's the same debris. It's just who's cutting it. So I don't, I don't see the logic in that. I think it's unfair to our older residents. They are paying for the bulk pickup, but they're not able to use it because they're too old. And then they have to pay again for a vendor to haul it off. They're double-paying. So I would like, I wanted to bring it up tonight. I haven't given any direction to staff yet on this. I wanted to bring it up and see if there was a consensus from the council to proceed on that. One other item, which I'm not as adamant about, but so long as we're in there, I'll bring it up. I'd love to hear your feedback on it as well. And that has to do with, I'm sure, on the council, you all have heard, where there's been items that have not been picked up because there's some construction debris in there. Well, that's also an ordinance. That's not in our contract. That's an ordinance as well. And so I believe that that should come out. We may still want to put some restrictions in there, but I would put it in the contract. I would not put it in ordinance. I think we should have the latitude to hear from the residents and make the right choice, contract to contract, how we want it to be, as opposed to having it being hard and fast, that this construction debris cannot be picked up by our waste vendors. Like I say, I'm not as adamant about that one. I see, I see logic to that one. I don't see any logic to the first one. So with that, let me, let me just open it up, see if there's any, any comments on that. I'd appreciate some feedback.
Yeah, Jim?
Mayor, can you tell me when this ordinance went into effect?
It's been there a long time.
Forever. And why was it put in there to start with? What was the problem with it?
I think, I think, I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you, but I will say that the opposing point that I've heard mentioned to me is that the feeling is that vendors will come with their trucks full of debris, they'll cut a few trims on somebody's yard, and then dump the whole load there, and we will end up paying for a lot of debris that didn't actually come from the ranches. That's, that's the other point. And I suspect that might be why it's in there.
Mayor?
Yeah.
You're 100% correct. That was one of the major reasons why it was in there. The second reason why it was in there was because of the fact that without that in there, the waste went up, which meant that across the board, the tonnage went up, and everyone had to pay more money as a community. So there was a thought back then, and it's up to each council to make that decision, that by telling the hauler to take the debris, that the town's total waste would go down, and therefore, everyone would pay less across the board.
Yeah. And I would say the reason why they're paying less is because some of our residents, and I think it's some of the residents who may have the most difficult time paying for it, is paying double. And so I don't think it's fair. I do think that, you know, that this is, this is an issue. But the counterpoint to that is, we all have, it's not like they can come and dump 20 loads of debris bulk on there, you know? There's still that, that 12 cubic yard limitation, or two, the Volkswagen size.
16.
Let's go with that.
16 yards.
Yeah.
12 yards.
Yeah, I think it's 12 yards, yeah. So, but, but we're still limited to that. It's not like we can take all this debris. And so, I mean, there's a count, a point and a counterpoint to put in there. But I am not comfortable that our older residents, for the most part, are the ones that are paying double.
Mayor, do you think that the word would get out that, that could, that the vendors could come in and do that? Like you said, maybe just three or four limbs on some property, but they've got 10 yards on their truck, and they put it out. I mean, the word would get out, wouldn't it, from the vendors? And they'd come here to dump? I mean, I just, I'd be afraid of that.
Yeah, it could get out, absolutely. It could get out.
I think it would get out very quickly. I personally, when I brought this up several years ago, I was flabbergasted, because I, you know, if somebody cuts a tree limb off of my property, I actually be able to put it out on bulk.
Right.
You know, and I, and then, of course, the reasons came out, just like, just now, the point and counterpoint. And I, it just, it just seemed weird to me that I couldn't have somebody cut and then put it out, you know? But there are gonna be people who are gonna take advantage of it. Totally. If we wanna, if we wanna resend it, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but we'd have to be aware of the caveats that we're creating. Because I think we're gonna create some. I'm watching it now with landscapers bringing a lot of stuff in. I'm watching the trucks come in. I'm home at that time of day now. And I was kind of shocked at how much is coming in, and I, in Rolling Oak. And it's trailers full of debris. And I don't know where it's all gone.
Absolutely. And, and let me tell you, it's, it's not that we're gonna take this out, and then all of a sudden, it's gonna start. It's already happening. If you don't think it's happening...
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm trying to mean.
You know? I mean, this is very difficult to enforce in the first place. This is one of those ordinances that penalizes the people that follow the rules. That's what this is. Because there, it already happens all the time. I get calls, I'm sure you all get the calls, where vendors have come in and people are saying, I don't know where all this debris came from, but it's now in my front yard, you know? And I just tell them, you know, call Davie Police, get a police report, get it out there, and we'll haul it away. But it's already happening. Will it increase, Jim? Yeah, I think it will. But I don't think it, I don't know what the increase will be. But I, but I can tell you this, it's already happening. So it's not like, it's not happening now, and it'll start then. It's already happening.
Could we ask the firm that we've hired to do the proposals to look and see what that might end up costing us, or the residents overall, as Mr. Apolikoff said, everybody's fees would go up because of the total amount? Could we have them look at that to see?
I think it's a good idea.
To keep, you know, I'd rather, you know, I'd like to keep the rates down for everybody if I could. I know we are punishing people, but, you know, I'd like to keep the rates down for everyone if I could.
So would I. I mean, don't get me wrong. I mean, last thing I'd wanna do is raise the rate for everybody. But I want to be fair to everybody.
Oh, absolutely, right.
I know, I want to be fair.
So maybe the company doing the proposal could kind of look at that for us, or maybe we could come up with some kind of numbers or something for that?
Yep, yep. I think it's a great, great suggestion. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I get the point of double charging. I don't think that's right. And if there's a way we can fix this without creating an incentive for these landscape maintenance companies that are unscrupulous to come in and start dumping, I can see that happening. Because the neighbors in my area that use the services, those trucks are full when they pull out at the end of the day. They do four or five houses on the street. But if it's, it's the neighbors on the streets debris, then you know what? Put it in the bulk pile.
Yeah.
When you bring up construction debris, I don't think that's a good idea. Because whereas, you know, we heard that people put out root balls occasionally, and maybe they're from commercial. And, you know, if you dig out a tree, you should be able to put out the root ball. Problem with construction debris is it's a lot heavier than landscape debris. And if somebody comes in and does a demo job, and they're taking down a wall, an exterior wall with all block and busted-up concrete, or replacing a sidewalk, that's probably as much bulk as somebody puts out for an entire year in the way to that. So I can see that getting very out of control. I can also see GCs that live in town bringing home their project debris.
Right.
And now we're, we're really subsidizing an industry at that point. So landscape debris, I would consider that. But construction debris, that's a whole nother ball of wax.
Right, right. And I totally get that. That's why I said, you know, I'm not as adamant about that. I will say, just to play devil's advocate, but I get your point. And I don't, I don't disagree with you. But these things, I think we could tailor in a contract better than just an ordinance that says you just can't do it. Because, because the other side of this coin is that we do have people that do work on their house, and really, we have not given them an avenue for getting rid of that debris. What are they supposed to do with that debris?
Well, I'll give you four examples, because I'm about to do this right now. I'm gonna bust up my sidewalks, because the muck, well, not the muck, but the dirt has settled, and it's getting to be a point where I need to do it. You know, when I start jackhammering up all that concrete, I can, there's a couple different ways to do it now. I can either have a dumpster dropped off in my driveway, which I'll pay by the ton, or Home Depot runs these big bags that they drop off, that you then fill your whatever in, and they'll haul it out.
Right.
Or, I mean, if we want to have an option like we do with people with excessive landscape debris, where, you know, if it's bigger than the 12 yards, instead of, you know, having a surplus, maybe what we do is we offer it as a service, they can call our hauler and have them haul it off. But it can get out of control pretty fast. I was in that industry for a long time, and the weights are insane.
They are, they are. Right. Yeah, Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, on the landscape degree, debris, what I'd like to suggest is maybe we survey surrounding communities, or other municipalities. we survey surrounding communities or other municipalities to get a sense of where they are, because I, I understand we don't want to cause a hardship on our residents. We don't want to become a dumping ground.
Right.
If they need to take it out of other municipalities as well. So just from a, I'm not making any suggestions, just from a background standpoint, I'd like to get a sense of what other municipalities are doing on, on this particular issue.
Good, good. I think that makes sense as well. Yeah. David.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at it, I, I, let me just summarize that regarding the landscaping debris, I support it, the construction debris, not so much in favor of that. Now, to go back to the landscaping debris, I think it develops a little bit of a study because our current hauler, when they set their contract, they base it upon this X amount. Now, if we rescind this ordinance while we're still under the contract, their cost, I'm, I'm guessing, would increase. And that was something that they hadn't contemplated. They, I, I would take into consideration that, you know, when they made their bid, they says, okay, these certain amount of people have their own landscaping company and they're going to haul theirs away. Now we're burdened with this additional amount. And, you know, we've had complaints about it, about the hauler, but, you know, just taking it from their perspective, their costs are going to go up if we rescind this ordinance next meeting or whatever. But in the broad perspective, I do support it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. And, and actually, I, I think that if we were to change it, I think this is actually a good time to do it, because we're right at the break. And we, you know, we could, we could time it for the end of the contract if that's what we wanted to, you know, to your point, so that we don't burden the.
But I, I very, very much. When I read that, I was like, why is this in there? I mean, Vince Valetta, I'm sorry, he's just not in a cap, capacity to do his own landscaping.
Mayor.
Sorry, sorry.
Now, as to the construction debris, I, I don't know if I can actually support something like that. I, we get, you, you think about roofing contractor. Those roofing shingles are very, very, very heavy. And that's going to be a big burden on whoever, whomever we contract with. And I'm less inclined to support something like, like that unless a very, very good reason is set forth to rescind that type of ordinance. But those are my thoughts.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, just a, a couple of points. I, I don't, I think the construction debris, while it might be convenient for somebody who's home remodeling, like Bob's busting up a sidewalk, that might be a, that's a one-off situation. It's not something you do a lot of.
Right.
You know, I think we'd be opening up a very large can of worms by entertaining that.
Yeah.
A possibility, you know, I just had a conversation with Keith on this, possibility is maybe we could figure out a way, we'll, we'll don't touch the ordinance, but somebody who uses, who's, uses a landscape company and they do haul away stuff, if they're able to prove it somehow, we can get them a credit or something on their sanitation. In other words, the other side of the coin, where they not being double, double taxed in a manner of speaking, paying for a service and paying it through the town. I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing that out.
Seems like a lot of paperwork.
I don't know.
I'm open, I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, I don't know either. I'm just saying.
Suggestions, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, so, so kind of what I've heard is, let's, let's not worry about the construction. I don't think there's a, you know, I, like I said, I wasn't, I threw it out. I mean, this is the only time we get to talk. So, so, you know, sometimes, sometimes it's a great idea, sometimes it's not. But at least we, we talk it through and, and I, I really appreciate that. The, the landscaping one, I think, is worth pursuing, getting some more education on it. We, we can look into that.
More talking, talk about it some more.
Yeah. I, I'm afraid that we're going to generate a, a ton of work for administration for, you know, looking at receipts and, I don't know.
Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but I think if we can, if we can look into that, as Jim said, maybe we can talk to the vendor, find out what additional costs would be there. And Andy, if you can poll our, our neighboring communities, that would be excellent as well. So, good. Thank you all for kind of indulging me on that. And then the last thing.
One more thing.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
That if we do rescind this ordinance on the landscaping issues, that will be an additional burden to whomever we select. So it could be, it could cause that contract to go up.
Well, you got to remember, the hauler gets paid by the ton. So the more they care, the more they're paid.
Bingo. Bingo.
You know?
Right. Yeah, yeah. And, and I, you know, I, I think, yeah, we've, we've kind of talked through that. Yes, I, I do think that there will be an increase there, but I, there's an element of being fair to, to everybody that I think is also, needs to be taken into account. So let's see how everything comes out and make the right decision based on the information we get. All right. Save the best for last. So I am super excited, you know, as a town, we have been looking to get a farmer's market going for a very long time. It was something that, over the last couple of years, I just, it was like a, a personal quest of mine to, to, to get it to happen. And I just really want to thank the administration for all that they did. I'm gonna, I don't see George here, he must have left, but I was going to call out George. George Morris, he did an amazing job in, in preparation of the property out there in the Southwest Meadows Preserve. And, and, and all that to say that it's all come together to where we are going to have our very first farmer's market in a week and a half on March 19th. And I am super excited about it. And then we're going to have it for the next six weeks after that. So we'll have a total of seven weeks in a row of that. And it's going to start out probably mostly with, we're working with a, an individual that, that does farmer markets throughout South Florida, and so he'll bring in his normal vendors. But make no mistake about it, where we really want to go is we want to have our local folks out there. I want to, I want to taste all the local produce and, and see what everybody's growing and enjoy it and have us all out there together, kind of exploring all the, all the great farm produce that is produced in our town. So I'm super excited about that. I can't thank the administration and all the ideas that came from the residents and all that, putting all the support to get this to happen. I do, I do have a little bit of a funny story that I have to pass along about this. So I, I had my weekly meeting with Andy and he finally gave me the big okay. We are ready to go. He gave me the date. I was super psyched. I, I left here all excited. I went home. I told my wife, Denise, guess what? You know, the farmer's marker, market is here, you know, March 19th? She goes, March 19th? You know, we're going to be in Oklahoma on March 19th for my mom's birthday. And I was like, oh, that's right. So, so my wife's mother's 80th birthday is the same day, so I will not be there for the inaugural one, but I guarantee you, I will be there a week later. So, so enjoy. Let me know how it is and I will get there as quickly as I can, but, you know, I have to keep my wife happy, so.
Maybe, maybe that could be our warm-up, because I won't be there either. I had previous engagements as well. And maybe we do a ribbon cutting on the second one.
I, I'm good with that.
That's the initial warm start.
Not to say. I'll be there. Remember it's Southwest Meadows.
Take pictures.
Meadows what?
Meadows.
Preserve. All right. Excellent, excellent. All right. So, but I am sincerely, honestly, just thrilled that this has come together and really looking forward to the community sharing in this, so it's awesome. All right. And so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you for your leadership.
And as well, to Andy and his team.
Yeah, appreciate all the support to make it happen. I really do. It's, it's definitely a team, team effort. Okay. So with that said, legal comments.
Sure, Mayor, and excellent news on the farmer's market. Very excited to attend. As it relates to the, the item before, I didn't chime in further, but once we assemble all the data and information, I'd like to sit down with you to figure out if there's a way to draft language that maybe could split the baby here.
That would be awesome.
And do what you want it to do, without potentially opening up the door to, to issues. One thing that, just to mention, remember, there's only so many hours you can put out your debris or your bulk trash before collection.
Right.
And another problem that occurred in the past, and I didn't get into everything, was that someone would hire a landscaper on day A and that, they would put it out and they wouldn't, they'd get cited by code because they put it out so many days early, which then creates an issue where everyone wants their landscaper on the exact same day in an entire area in the town. So there's, there's definitely things we can discuss that, that I think some of them have solutions for, that may be able to get you where you want to go.
I appreciate that, Keith.
In regards to, I, I'm going to bring this up briefly. For some reason, the rural ranches plus item has been linked directly with a property. And that was never the intent when Councilmember Jablonsky called me. It was to create a new zoning category that could be applied across the board to any property. We currently do not have an application submitted to the town on any property relating to this potential use of zoning category. So it was just the creation of a zoning category. Another thing that I heard from, from residents say that I just want to respond to, an average home in the town in the last five years is, you know, five, 6,000 square feet, big homes. That's, that's what we've been seeing a lot of. Recently, in the communities that are being built, they're, they're actually come down a little bit. They're a little bit smaller. You have your one-off mansions that, that you see, but they're really between 4,000 to 5,500 square feet is what we're seeing. I did the math real quickly because I was trying to figure out where the resident was saying. A 2.5 acre lot, the lot coverage for just the, the plate of a home, and most of these homes are two stories, is 10,890 square feet. So that person could build a 22,000 square foot home. We have very few of those in Southwest Ranches. You know, in the last 10 years, I asked Russell, we think there may be five, you know, total that would have been anywhere near there. Under a 2.0 category, your, your lot coverage is 8,712. Even that, we have very few that are a footprint of 8,000. Some are 5,000, go up, you know, a portion of the home, et cetera. So I just wanted to point out, because if you're looking at an argument of open space, the reality is a, a developer will never develop 10% of their lot coverage on a 2.5 acre lot. The home would be absolutely enormous and would be one of the largest homes in Southwest Ranches based on that footprint. So I just wanted to bring that up. The resident asked a question concerning what would I do if a contractor knocked out the power at town hall? I would have filed an insurance claim directly with the town's insurance provider. I would get my money from the town's insurance provider and they would subrogate against the person who did the damage to ensure that that wouldn't impact me or my rates or anything else. That's how insurance works. You file it with your company and then they subrogate against the other one. You don't go chasing someone else's insurance. You can, but it's a very difficult way of handling it. Instead, like anything else, even car accidents and the like, you generally file with your company and they subrogate against someone else's.
Yeah, but I, I think this is a situation where we can, we can help facilitate the situation for residents. Certainly, they did nothing to create this incident. I understand that that's, that may be the more standard way, but there may be implications there for an individual's own insurance rates, if they get caught up in that for something that they had nothing to do. And if we have the ability to facilitate it and to, you know, drive this to a good resolution, I think that's, that's what we, that's what we're here for, to serve our residents. And I think this is the way we can do it.
By the way, I wasn't saying we weren't going to, but I was just answering the free legal advice question directly to the council, because the, the question was asked. So that, that was the $175 answer that, that he got. All right. Finally, and I just want to mention only because I, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting, December, and the town did a phenomenal job at Birdie Knight's memorial service the other day. It was an honor to be there. It was an honor to know her. And thanks everyone for the town for making such a truly wonderful event occur. Actually, I have one more thing that Andy said I can touch upon, so I will. The, the town received, as you know, a P3 for the development of the former CCA property. The other day, the, the selection committee reviewed two quality applicants that came forward to develop the site for industrial purposes. The, the rankings occurred and one vendor got significantly more, or higher ranked than the other, not for the ability to do it, but because the second ranked vendor was building and flipping. And the, and the primary one from the discussion was building and holding for a very long time. You know, economically, there, there were some major differences as well, but that, that was really the main reason that I saw behind it. So we started our negotiations with the first ranked vendor. I think the council's going to be incredibly pleased where, where this winds up. I think that the town, through just an industrial project, meaning exactly what's next door to that site right now, will wind up potentially debt-free with a revenue source going forward long into the future of the town. So I, I know from myself, and I'm sure Andy are incredibly excited to bring this before you, it will be brought before you within the next 60 days, because they need to close quickly. So looking forward to it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer now or offline, or, you know, when we bring the item forward.
Yeah, I just want to, I got a glimpse at this agreement. I got a glimpse at the quality of the partner in this case, which is unbelievable. It's, it's a, it's a vendor that we will be proud to be associated with if this goes through. And just really appreciate the work that Keith, you've put into it. I know you've put a lot of work into it and, and all administration to bring this to fruition, or at least get it to the point where it's at right now. We'll see where it goes. But this is an amazing agreement for the future of our town.
Thank you. I, I should also mention, only for the record, but Andy, Andy knows, I've done legal work for almost every one of these developers that's applied. I don't currently doing legal work for them. They will sign conflict waivers. They have general counsel in-house that we will be on the opposite side of. But really, in this transaction, it's a purchase price and a long-term revenue stream. There's not much more to it than that. You know, they're following the code. Sorry.
Questions? I've been through this before. Nobody from the council's involved in any of the discussions on this?
No. Legally, they can't be.
Okay. And how do we also get a glimpse? I'd really like to see the contract and what we're getting involved in.
Sure. We don't have a contract yet. We have a PowerPoint presentation, which I got to look at the statute to make sure that, now that they've ranked, that we can disclose that to you. And the minute that I confirm that, I'll look at it tomorrow. We will email the council the, the submission for the winning vendor. But the one thing I can tell you, and, and that's why I hesitate, the dollar amount of the bid and what they have offered for an ongoing percentage is the base offer. We're negotiating much higher than what they offer. We're negotiating much higher than what they offer. So, um, so that's my only caveat to that is your end deal is going to be much more than what the initial offering is. And, and I can say it publicly only because, um, it's, it's out there anyway. Uh, Andy, I think the original offer is sixteen point nine?
Just under seventeen million.
Yeah, it says sixteen point nine million plus five percent of the recurring revenue from the gross, um, uh, rentable square footage of the facility. Uh, it was proposed at forty percent, uh, but the code allows fifty. So the revenue's going to go up now that they can go up by the extra, uh, ten percent. I, I personally am shooting to try to get, uh, the purchase price, uh, north of eighteen, uh, with an additional percentage point of about six percent to seven percent of the, uh, gross rental receipts going into, uh, the future. So if the council is to add it up in the future, not only are you going to get your purchase price, which will pay off all the debt in the town and put ten to eleven million dollars into the bank conservatively, uh, but between the annual revenue that you will receive from the rental, uh, ad valorem tax, fire fees, waste fees, you will be generating more than a million dollars a year, uh, into perpetuity.
This is what I was looking for two years ago. Thank you.
I tried again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Keith.
Excellent.
Thank you. Good work.
How, how long do we have the, the cone of silence and all that with us?
You're, you're not, you're not legally allowed to speak to the public about it until we present the item before you. Uh, but so I'm giving a little teaser, and, and one of the reasons why, and, and I can explain this. Generally, under the P three statute, you're not supposed to sell a property. You're supposed to do a long-term, uh, lease, ninety-nine years. Every one of these that I've done, uh, and I did one in Hollywood, uh, for an affordable, um, uh, senior apartment complex called Pinnacle at, uh, Adams Street, um, the municipality transferred from a P three to a straight procurement because a ninety-nine-year lease would devalue the property so much that no one would come and want it. So instead, what occurs at this stage is really we're going to lift at some point the cone of silence by transferring it to a straight procurement rather than a, a P three procurement. But we will have a clause in the contract, which we've already indicated, that in the event that the person who builds it sells it, the town will get four percent of the purchase price, uh, thereafter, to ensure that it's a long-term hold and that the town profits, uh, in the future.
Anything else, Keith?
Uh, no, I, I would just say, I think the only reason that you really love that five K run is because I see you running by me and lapping me like three times.
I do enjoy the five K run, but I do enjoy, I do enjoy, but I'm getting slower every year, I'll tell you that much. All right, awesome. Uh, Andy?
Yeah, Andy, try to beat that.
I, I'll just say, you, you're all lucky that Keith did the report on the P three because he spoke more and said more than I would have been prepared to say publicly. So you got more information out of him, so that, that was a good thing. Uh, Vice Mayor Jablonsky mentioned the household hazardous waste event on Saturday. Just as, uh, I just want to give you all a heads up. We've had a lot of complaints and issues with tires being dumped around town. So code has proactively done a tire sweep in advance of that, so they can drop it off and picked up, what'd you say, Julio, twenty-four tires? Twenty-six tires of various sizes that have just been dropped in different places around town.
Great.
That have been picked up. So if you happen to see one tomorrow, let us know because then we'll make it twenty-seven. We'll go get that.
That's, that's awesome.
And the, the only other thing I'll share with you is, you know, Russell Mackey was here earlier from Ways Pro, and he sent an email to his team and, and forwarded to me as an FYI, and I want to, it's words. It has to be backed up with meaning, but I want to share what he sent out. Team, I just attended a Southwest Ranches meeting. Although I expected to hear complaints and express our difficulties with COVID, I did not expect to hear about so many failures in proactive communication. Southwest Ranches is going out to bid, and not only do I want to finish this current agreement strong, but I want to show them the quality service we are capable of and renew the agreement going forward. I want to meet all of you at the Pine's office tomorrow morning at nine AM to discuss an action plan on the comments we received. There were some really good points raised, and we can easily make those improvements. So obviously, needs to be backed up with actions, but the words were appropriate. I think he heard what, what the council and the residents said, and, uh, you know, hopefully we'll see some better communication coming out of that going forward.
Awesome.
So, and just Keith, I, I do have one thing. You can't top that. I can't top debt-free. But I did let you all know that earlier that, that we currently have three drainage projects in the, in the state budget, subject to final vote next week, and then to be sent off to, to the governor's office. But we've got three very important projects in there right now to the tune of about one point five million dollars. So that's not a, not a bad thing to, to close my report on. So just share that with you.
Excellent.
And, uh, we'll keep an eye on that as that moves forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, uh, one final thing that I forgot to ask, and that is, I know the members of the charter review committee have been here for over two hours, and I was asked whether or not you would consider moving item twelve up to the next item on the agenda.
Yeah.
I'm cool with it.
I'll make a motion to move it up.
Second.
Can we take, uh, can we take the role on that?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Breckers?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so then item number twelve.
Okay, Mayor, uh, tonight, we're going to discuss the proposed charter review amendments. So just a little bit of, of, uh, background, if, if I may. Uh, back in July of, of, of twenty-twenty-one, the town council appointed a charter review committee, uh, to satisfy the requirement of a periodic review of the charter. Uh, the committee met for the first time on October fifth, and four of the representatives of the committee are here tonight, and I want to first off thank them for their service. They worked tirelessly on this project. Um, they were very professional, and they had some very good suggestions, very good discussion throughout the course of the, uh, the time that we met. We concluded our meetings, uh, on February second, and what we have before us tonight, what I'm going to show on the, um, projectors and on the screens, is the culmination of their work and their suggestions for town council consideration. Yeah, we can get the other one, too. Yeah, we're gonna, we just turned this one on. I'm gonna turn the other one on. Yeah. So, um, what I'm going to do is just basically go through the charter and just outline their, 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 their suggested language changes. So the very first one is actually something that came up towards the end of our review, but, uh, it, the way it worked out, it just kind of moved a section of the charter to the front of the charter. So section one, the new section one point oh one was previously indicated in, uh, the back of the charter prior. And this is creating a section that, uh, just basically states that the, for the, for the purpose of compliance with Florida statutes relating to assessment and collection of ad valorem taxes, the town has hereby created and established effective June sixth, two thousand. So that was, again, previously, uh, remained in the back of the charter, and now it's just being moved to the front. And we're, we'll be, um, what they're proposing is to renumber, uh, the sections within Article One. One of the biggest points of, uh, discussion during our, our meetings was about this next section, section one oh, uh, the new section one point zero two, the corporate existence. And as you can see, the language changes in there were to reaffirm, um, what they believe to be the essence of the town. And that's the corporate existence. So they wanted to amend the, the statement there to say, in order to preserve, protect, promote, and enhance the quality of life in the rural, residential, agricultural, and equestrian character of Southwest Ranches, a municipal corporation known as Town of Southwest Ranches is hereby created pursuant to the constitution of the state of Florida. So what they wanted to do, obviously, was to ensure that the agricultural and equestrian character of the town was included in that statement. And so the language change that you see, all of the language changes that you will see are highlighted in red tonight that we'll discuss. Uh, new language is underlined, and strike-throughs denote what was there previously and is being proposed to be removed.
So, um, before, before we move on from that, Keith, I have a question for you. So there, there are a number of wording changes like this that are clarifications, improvements. Is it possible for us to combine all those into a single charter wording rather than breaking them up into smaller? And as we go through them, I'll, I'll point them out to you.
I, I will have to look at them collectively. There's something called the single-subject rule, which means that if, if everything is based on the same subject, you can do it together.
Okay.
But if you start going into multiple passages and provisions, then you can't.
Okay.
Um, I will tell you that in the past, we, we did, um, one bill in Tallahassee a long time ago to basically fix all the minor language, uh, in the charter to avoid putting it out for referendum because as the council is well aware, y- you never want more than three, you know, tops, generally speaking, charter amendments, uh, because if not, the voters don't, uh, actually get to see it. So, um, sometimes we will go back to Tallahassee and fix it. Sometimes things can be clarified by ordinance, so it depends how you want to do it.
Okay, okay. This, this is one that I think might fit into that category.
Okay, so the next, uh, section where there's proposed language changes is section two point oh four, the election and term of office. So under the mayor section there, the new language proposes the mayor must be a resident of the town for at least the preceding five years of the election. So that was a language that was not previously there and, uh, was proposed to be included. Um, with, within subsection B of that section, two point zero four, there was also a language that was proposed to state that, uh, beginning with the, the election of two thousand two and for each election thereafter, the members of the council must also be residents for at least the two preceding years of the particular residential district on the date for which they qualify for election. The two-year residency requirement shall not apply to residents who have lived in the town continuously for at least, for at least ten years immediately prior to qualification. What I propose tonight is just to kind of highlight the changes, and then if there's questions, we can go into those questions, Mayor, unless you have another way that you'd like to do, approach this.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, let's, let's, um, uh, I think with each one, we need to just stop for a second and see if there's any, any comments on that. Any, any comments from the council and, and kind of what we're looking for. As, as Keith said, um, I think we need to have in our mind kind of prior, a prioritization here. Um, it, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's, from, from what the committee recommended, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a bad recommendation out there. But on the other hand, we, we can't overburden the residents to try and read through this, or they, they won't read through it, frankly. So, so it's, it's more of a prioritization. So, um, uh, I will welcome some feedback from that standpoint.
To me, this is one that fits very well into a charter amendment versus, uh, an ordinance or, or a change in Tallahassee.
Right.
Because to me, this, this regulates how we, how people run for office, you know, who qualifies for running for office, basically. That's probably a better way to put it. So I like this a lot.
Okay.
I don't want to get into supporting everything I do and don't like, but I think this is important.
Okay.
One, one little word that I found, that I found, um, a substitute. If you go into the sentence, if you, we're looking at page forty-seven, forty.
Two point oh four B.
Right.
Correct. Um, going up one, two, three, four, five lines from the bottom, replacing residents with electors.
Where, where are you?
Yeah, I'm not sure where you are either.
Um, five lines up from the bottom.
Page forty-seven?
Forty-seven to forty.
Change residents to electors?
Yeah, the, the two-year resident shall not apply to electors who have lived, lived in the town continuously. There's a, there's a change later on about electors, and that's the only reason that I want, I'm just trying to find consistency.
I don't see this anywhere.
Our says resident.
It starts with resident, Gary. It's the second from the bottom blue line.
Residency is already in, in the sentence.
There's two blue lines there.
I got it right here.
Change from residence to elector. Are we using, uh, which are we using consistently throughout the document? I'm not, I, I like the idea of elector because that's probably a better term. But are we consistently saying residents throughout the doc? Because two lines up from there, or three lines up, two lines up, we were saying resident.
I think we say resident most.
Right there, mayor must be a resident of the town as well.
Yeah, resident is a common term throughout the entire document.
Six, one half dozen the other. I was just looking for a consistency term.
I think, I think, you know, I, I get what you're saying, but I think the consistent name is more resident, elector.
Thank you. Mayor, I have one quick question about this, the two-year residency requirement. Um, you know, I know what this, I know why this was put in if somebody lived in Green Meadows for eight years and, and they moved out to Roland Oaks, and there was an election coming up, and they didn't live in that Roland Oaks area for two years, I understand. But they do have to live in Roland Oaks to run in that district.
Right, that's correct.
Right. I mean, it doesn't really state that here, but maybe it should.
It's in a different section.
Yeah, it's in a different section.
It is, it's in there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's better, Jim, it's better not to state the same thing in two different sections.
Right.
Because future changes may change one and not the other, and then you've got a conflict and so.
So the, the one about, moving back up, the one about the mayor being five years, that, is that out or in or?
Uh, it's proposing that it's in. Um, I.
I'm not sure that's legal, was it?
It's legal, I think.
It's long. I'd have to look into it if you guys say you want.
Well, that was the rec, I think you should look into it because that was the recommendation from the.
Well, what, what I'm saying is, I, the way I understood it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you all are going through all these tonight. You're going to essentially rank them or determine which ones you want to go forward with. And at that point, we will, uh, do final blessing, make sure the language is proper, uh, translate it from English to Spanish and Creole, all the normal things we have to do, uh, and then bring it back to you in an ordinance package. So, um, as relates to residency, there's a reasonable test that the Supreme Court, uh, has instituted to say whether or not it's reasonable to require someone to have a residency for a certain amount of time before they'd be allowed to run for office within the area. When I drafted the two-year residency requirement previously, and I think actually, uh, Councilmember Hartman, you were definitely on that committee then, uh, and maybe Councilmember Jablonsky too, if I remember, um, we put in all that preamble information because of the unique character of the town, the roadways, all those things to order to justify it if it was ever challenged, because so far, the only thing that's been upheld is a one-year requirement. Five years starts getting really long to be able to say whether or not it's reasonable that someone would have to live there for five years before knowing the municipality. So that, that's what the question is, but it's up to you all and, and to whether or not, uh, you take away the risk.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, I, I think.
I'd love to put in that you have to serve on the council first.
That's what, that's exactly where I was going. I mean, as mayor, it's kind of awkward to say those kind of things because it sounds like I'm trying to avoid, you know, people.
I asked Keith that, and he said, no way you can do that.
Oh, you can't do that?
I, I don't think I answered that. I'd have to look into it. It's interesting.
I, I would look, I would look into both those, to be honest with you, Keith.
All right.
I mean, and, and the point is this, the point is this, is that we have a very unique, um, community, and, and I don't think you understand it after a year. I don't think you understand it after two years. I think you can appreciate it after a year. I think you can appreciate it before you even get here.
I think it takes ten years.
But as far as really understanding, um, who we are and what we value and where we want to be in ten, twenty years, I think that's tough to pick up in a year or two.
Yeah, I, I agree.
What, what you end up with, if somebody runs for mayor, moving into the town two years after, it's just somebody who's politically ambitious.
Exactly.
We don't want that.
Okay.
Just, just so that I know, which would the council favor? Uh, the ones, uh, sponsored by Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jablonsky, or a year requirement?
Can you do both? Can you put an or in there?
Well, it, it would, by virtue, it would almost have to be because if you serve on the council, you're going to be.
You're going to be there for five.
Right.
So make it that, well, then it four years.
Right.
Instead of five, then it's either four years.
Well, you gotta have two-year, four-year run, then four years, so that's six years.
Right.
You know?
I think you can get away with just the one if.
I, 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 you know, obviously, there would have to be some nuances there if, uh, you know, disaster hit the town or whatever, but, uh, but, you know, I, I, you learn a lot being on the council.
A whole lot.
Let me see if we can pull it off. Trust me, twenty years sitting in that chair over there, it's the learning curve since I've been in office is mind-bending. It really is.
It is.
And also, and this is just a, a positive to the two of you, you know, I sat there at public comment, throwing darts at you for years on things I didn't agree with. Uh, now, I completely respect the, uh, the experience you both have because I sit here and marvel at some of the things you guys come up with, particularly Gary, with how creative ways you can spend some of the funds that were, you know, not necessarily budgeted or anticipated. This has been such a learning experience for me because it shows me how much I didn't know, even though I've been here since the founding, so.
Yeah, you're one of the founders.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, uh, for what I've learned from you over the last, you know, it's, it's almost four years already, if you can believe it.
Hey, it takes that long just to figure out the phones.
All right. Um, Mary Ann, did you have a comment? If you could come to the, to the mic.
It's a life well-lived. Um, thank you so much for considering that because you were there through all our meetings. And really, in one year, you can't get the experience to understand what this whole community is about. understand what this whole community is about. And David, you started off by being our president of Sunshine Ranches. You got your feet wet, you understood how precious this area is, and you listened all those years to your residents, to all the homeowners. And like each of you, Steve, I saw you for years coming out here before you ran for office. For years, you were dedicated. And that's what it takes to serve this community. Someone coming in in one or two years will not grasp the, the enormity of what you've taken on your shoulders, because it's very complicated, and you've done an excellent job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thanks.
Okay. Russell, the next one?
Certainly, Mayor. Okay, so then, we, we, from that point, we move ahead all the way until we get to section three point zero three, powers and duties of the town administrator, which is on page fifty-two of seventy. And the suggested change from the committee there was just basically, there was a concern about potential nepotism. And I think there was some, just, you know, some references to things that have happened in the past, not necessarily concerns about the current, but suggested language change there and was in three oh three A, to add the words, and enforce the nepotism policy of the town as defined by town ordinance. So, just basically reaffirming that. I don't know if there's any-
Here's my question.
Yeah.
If it's already an inordinate, do we need to put it into the charter?
Yeah. I, 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 I'm not sure this is a charter item.
That's, that's, that's my question.
Yeah. And I, and I think the other thing is, without, you know, no disrespect to former councils, but if anything like this were to happen again, frankly, the town administrator would be gone.
Yeah.
He'd just be gone, you know?
Kind of interesting.
Yeah. You know, and-
Yeah, I certainly appreciate this. I remember the discussion.
It's just not going to happen. So, so I, I don't, you know, since we're limited on the number of items that we really can go in the charter, I, I don't, I don't see this one as raising for that.
While the intent is-
Is perfect.
Yeah, but we're like, it's just like double language. We've already got it.
We got the message.
Yep.
Yeah, Mayor, our administrator, whoever he is, would have a set of ethics, and, and if we didn't like it, he'd be gone, like you said.
Absolutely.
You know, so, I don't, I don't see that, you know.
Yep.
And if it's already in the ordinance, we, we've got it, so.
Yep. Okay, Russell, next one?
Okay, the next section is three point zero six, the town, referring to the town clerk. And is it more semantical changes more than anything else? Just clarifying who, who it is that prescribes the, the duties. And that's clearly not the town council, but the town administrator. So, I think that's a semantical change.
Yeah, so Keith, this is like another one that, you know, just take a look at it. See, see which of these, if possible, we're able to, to, I mean, that's the way I view it, is kind of these wording ones.
I, I, I will tell you that this was done originally on purpose. Because the, the, when Sherry Canada and then the other, I forgot her name now, I apologize, Susan, and they wanted the council to be totally in charge of the clerk's office and what they did. And, and that was a definite directed change. I appreciate it now that they may want to put it in the administrator, but I just want you to know that that was done intentionally back then.
Yeah, I think we've traveled a few miles since back then.
Just a few.
Yeah.
So, is this just something you could put in an ordinance, a cleanup ordinance?
No.
Just leave it alone?
But, but we'll either have to leave it alone or statutory.
I mean, I'm sorry, statutorily, I mean.
Well, if we, if we leave it alone, nothing really changes.
It doesn't change anything.
Doesn't change anything.
If we leave it alone, yeah. But the question is, is it worth changing?
Meaning, right now-
We can abdicate the response, or delegate the responsibility to the administrator.
That's what I'm saying.
But we could do that anyway.
That's what he's saying.
That's the point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear your first part.
I could fix this in an ordinance. I'm going to change my mind. The way I would do it is I would have an ordinance saying that the town council hereby designates the town administrator to do all established hiring criteria, et cetera.
So, we're delegating authority to ordinance?
So, Keith, if I can just clarify, the town, the council would retain the establishing of the hiring criteria, but delegating that, we would still retain that power, but we were delegating that to the town administrator by a proposed ordinance?
Correct.
All right.
Then you get the best of both worlds.
So, it wouldn't be in the charter?
It's great. Works.
This change would not?
No, I would, I would not put it in the chart. And actually, the, the one, the last one that I'm seeing, I wouldn't have even put in there, because it takes away power from the council.
Which one?
All right, let's, Keith, let's not jump ahead. Let's, let's wait till we get to-
No, no, I'm saying, it's in the same section.
If you eliminated that word right there, it says council ordinance, it meant that the council could never prescribe duties to the clerk. You'd never really want to take away what you-
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're not going to take action on this one, is what I'm hearing.
Leave it alone?
Yeah, we're going to leave this one alone. Okay. All right, Russell?
Okay, Mayor, the next section, three point zero seven, did garner significant discussion related to the town attorney. And the proposed language here, I'll just read the proposed language, says the town attorney or, or their law firm henceforth may not represent any member of the town council of any town-related, or, I'm sorry, let me read that again, the town attorney or their law firm henceforth may not represent any member of the town council outside of any town-related matter.
I could do this in ordinance also.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the, I, I am a firm believer behind the intent of what the committee was going here. And they're looking to ensure that there's no conflict of interest. And, and that's, that's, that's really important. And, but-
I'd rather put it in an ordinance.
So would I.
Yeah.
So would I.
Than putting it in front of the voters.
Yep. It creates, to put this in-
It creates confusion.
Frankly, if I was a voter out there and I voted on this, I would say, what did Keith do?
This looks like smoke.
You know?
Right.
It, it looks like there's, like we're fixing something that went terribly bad. And, and that's not what happened. But we do want to have the, the, the controls in place, and I think an ordinance would make sense.
We'll put it in an ordinance.
Yeah. Okay. Any, are we good with that?
I'm good with that. Keith, you can draw this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Outside of town-related matters, if I wanted to ask Keith if it was all right if I knocked my neighbor upside the head with a baseball bat because his dog pooped in my yard, I couldn't do that, because it's outside of the town. So, in other words, I couldn't talk to the town attorney about anything other than town business.
I don't think that's what it's saying.
Is that what it reads? I, I mean-
It says represent, right?
It says represent.
So, that's, that's different. Conversation is different than a representation.
Right, right.
Hundred and seventy-five dollar question is different.
So, I couldn't get Keith to represent me if I knocked him upside the head with a baseball bat?
I think that's what it's saying, yes. I think that's what it is saying, yes.
You don't want a criminal.
What about his, what about one of his attorney firms? And why would I not be able to, from one of his, members of his firm? Maybe not him individually, but somebody from his firm. Why wouldn't I be able to? And what if I already had?
I mean, it's a lea-
What if I already dealt with your firm? I'd have to stop dealing with them?
Now, okay, for the record, for the record right now, no one's using me or my firm. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. I just want everyone to know that. Secondly, I will, let me draft this in a way that I think you'll be able, that everyone will be able to be okay. I'll put language in there that basically says unless the council determines otherwise, for if there's ever something that occurs that someone says, hey, I really need your help with this, we would bring it back to the council and, and get consent for that representation, if, if never needed. But I think I can draft it.
One of the questions that had come up, which I think is a legitimate question, is let's say somebody was resident in the town, they'd been doing business with your firm for several years before they had, you know, the obligations that we have, and now they get elected, what happens to their real estate practice and the real estate attorney in your firm that's been supporting them for years?
Well, under the ordinance that I would draft, it would give the council the right to, to waive that.
Okay.
You know, so that was my, my point, that I, I'll make sure I put language in there that will cover it in the one-off scenario.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. So, we'll go the route of an ordinance on that one. Russell?
The next area where we have any proposed language, Mayor, is section six point zero one relating to elections. And subsection C had some, some dates that he harkened back to, I guess, the original charter. And so, it says commencing in two thousand and six. So, this stricken language is basically just looking for cleanup language, basically looking to remove language that's no longer necessary.
Yeah, I think this is kind of important.
Any discussion on this one?
I think this one's important to remove.
What, why is that?
Just to be, have it removed for clarity.
I, you know, I kind of, there's, there's another section here we'll get to that, to me is just noise. This particular section right here, the more I read it, I was like, you know what? This is like a piece of our history that we're purging from the charter. And I, I don't like it, I'll be honest with you. It's, it's like, it's like a piece of our history. And I know it doesn't, doesn't necessarily really have-
Doesn't serve any purpose.
Doesn't serve a purpose today, but-
It did.
It did. And I, I, this, this piece, I kinda-
You make a very good, good argument.
It's not hurting anything.
You persuaded me. You persuaded me.
I think, you know, I think if somebody, somebody, I, I remember when I first ran for office, and I met Vince Foletta at Publix, and the first question he asked me, this was back in two thousand and two, the first question he asked me was, have you read the charter? And I said, you know what, Vince, you caught me. I have not yet read the charter. He says, go home, read the charter. And I did. I went home and I read the charter. But, but I will say that this, you know, for anybody who runs, I'm going to tell them, have you read the charter? And I want them to read this, because this is history. This is part of our town, so.
You convinced me.
Okay.
Well, it's, we're trying to fix something that's not broke. It's just there.
Yeah.
Something that's not broken.
I think, I think, any other comments?
Not specifically on that language, but down on subsection G commencement of terms.
Where the certification?
Yeah, you know, I wouldn't have given that word a second thought four, five years ago.
Yeah.
But with what's gone on, you know, with certification of elections, et cetera, et cetera.
It could be months.
I don't know the answer. I mean, that's, that's, that's why I wanted to bring this up and ask Keith. I mean, if, if we swear somebody in and the election is overturned for whatever legitimate reason, I'm not going to, you know, take a side on it, then what do we do with the person that's, that's in, that's in the role?
Well, then they wouldn't be in the role. If the election is overturned or certified results were different, then that will prevail regardless under Florida election law.
Okay.
But the reason you all did that, it was, we were with Bush, Gore, and all those fights, that no one wanted to be in the middle of waiting, you know, a year to certify an election.
In twenty sixteen, it was point oh eight percent for me, and point oh five is the recount.
Sixteen?
Point oh eight, twenty sixteen.
Eighteen. Wait.
Twenty sixteen.
First time.
Sixteen.
First time, first time.
Oh, my God, I remember that.
Point oh eight percent. It was, and point oh five is actually the, the threshold for recount. So, if, if there's a recount in, in the election, and the recount turns out a different result, what would be the outcome?
I mean, if you wanted to change it based upon what you're saying now, which is different than what that says, you would change that language to say the term of office of any elected official shall commence immediately after the election unless there is a point five or less disparity in the results.
The point oh five is statutory.
No, but that's what I'm saying. But that, then you'd put that in there, you know, you would change the language to say it doesn't take effect unless a statutory recount is, is warranted.
You know, I, I, I'm going to say, I'm very comfortable with the language that they put in there, certification. And the reason why is I think, I know, before this was put in here, and, you know, the, the committee did a great job of putting in there, I didn't recommend this. But I, I, you know, we had, we used to have little discussions of when did, when did I actually take office? You know, was it, was it when the, the polls closed? When it was certified? When I was sworn in? You know, I mean, we, you know, had that? And, and I think this puts a line in the sand of when it, when it actually happens. And I'm not really worried about an election for Southwest Ranches getting pushed out twelve months to be certified. I mean, it, you know.
Would you have a council member, excuse me, would you have a council member in place? Or would you have just four council members with an empty seat?
I think you'd have four council members in a empty seat.
What's going to happen here, only from history, is the, the first meeting following the election will either have two members or three members.
Yeah, it's going to be two or three, because if it's certification-
That's what I'm saying.
Right. But, but I, I get that. In a worst-case scenario, if, you know, it could happen. But when, when is an election for Southwest Ranches going to be debated, you know, not certified?
No, I mean, no matter what, that first meeting after that election will have to be moved to the following week, which is fine. But meaning that the certification is never that quick, that you vote on Tuesday, and Thursday is always our meeting. So, so that's what I'm saying. You never, that, that meeting after that November election will have to be moved.
Which would, which would be fine.
It's fine. I'm just saying that that's what you'd have.
And if, and if certification is not the right thing, I, I think it is the right thing. But if it's not the right thing, then we need to pick something else. We need to, we need to know when the election is won.
Yeah. Does, does, I'm sorry.
And I'm just saying, anything other than certification is-
From the supervisor of elections.
Well, the supervisor of elections has a deadline when they have to certify by. I figured, I thought it was fifteen days or something along those lines. So, that would be our worst-case scenario.
Yeah, but then, yeah, but if you have a recount, if it's a, if it's, if it's a tight election and you have a recount, that, it's going to go beyond that.
I don't think it changes for the supervisor of elections, because that's when they have to report up to the Secretary of State. And that's why Brenda Snipes got in so much trouble, because she couldn't get all of these recounts done in time. My memory's not that great.
There's no issue with this language. I, I just want to make it clear. We just have to move that Thursday meeting after an election.
We only meet once in that month.
Which actually works out well.
Yeah, it actually works for our benefit to keep it in.
Because we could move it in the middle of the month.
Because it's usually in the mid, middle of the month.
Yeah.
Supposed to the first Thursday.
Right.
Because when I got, when I got elected in oh-ten-
Were the second and fourth, but fourth is canceled.
The first meeting was the next day.
Yeah.
Right.
And just luckily, I had a lot of votes on my side, so it was-
Andy's saying it's the third Thursday, so as, as long as that's the way you're doing it, we can make this work.
Yeah. So, are we good with this?
I still not quite understand. And we could end up with two council members, because the other three are being certified, or we can end up with three, because two are being certified. Could that certification go on for a long time? And-
I think what we're saying is it could, at the maximum, it could take us fifteen days. And that would be if all three of the electors were like ties. Like, I mean, the odds of anything like this happening are so-
Minimal.
I, I absolutely-
It's not a, it's not an individual thing.
Right.
So, you'd be hanging, you'd be hanging up three. That's your possibility.
No.
Yeah, because it's all certified at one shot.
Yeah, they certify at one shot, but, but the, but you're talking a extremely rare scenario.
I mean, I'm not worried about it.
Moving the meeting is the solution if we go with this language, which makes sense.
That is the solution.
Yeah.
As part of, it is good language.
Push it back a week, or a week past where we normally would do it.
Well, I think we're already there, tell you, from what Andy was saying, we're already, we're already on that.
Normally, we're the second and fourth Thursdays, but, but in November, because we only have one meeting, several years ago, we made the decision to move that meeting to the third week. And if you're, if you recall, that's when, when finance brings forward their, their budget cleanup from the last fiscal year. And that gives them an extra week to, to process, process that information, get that, get that information together. So, we, we have, over the last several years, I don't recall how many, the November meeting has been on the third Thursday, which, which should help to eliminate any problem from this.
Okay, good.
So, this language is, is being proposed as being on the ballot?
Well, I mean, we need to prioritize when we get through them all.
Right.
We don't want to go that far.
Yeah, okay. It, it is one of the, one of the few. Because, I mean, if we have the other, the other issue that came to mind just now, overseas ballots. If you have point oh eight percent, and then you have some overseas ballots that could change that less than the point oh five, then your state, then your state recount comes in. Point oh five is a mandatory state recount. And if you've got overseas ballots that bring you back within that margin of less than two point, point oh five percent, then you've got your state recount, and it could change the election.
Which would be true whether we use certification-
Correct.
Or no matter what element we were to use, it could, it could kick in.
All right.
Okay, so we're in favor of leaving that in, is that what I'm hearing?
Jim, are you okay with leaving that in?
Yeah, I understand, I do now, yeah, thank you, very much.
All right.
Can make the work.
Okay, good, all right. Russell, I think we're ready for the next one.
Okay, Mayor, so the next one is a proposed change to the oath of office that the council members are sworn to take. And basically, it's the current oath of office with the addition of some language that was in the corporate existence section. So adding the words agricultural and equestrian on that third line there after the word rural residential is what's being proposed.
Yeah, this one, once again, Keith, is one of the ones that I kind of marked as, if we can do the minor wording changes.
But this is, is actually not really minor, it's not like a scripner's error, this is actually.
No, I know, it's not, certainly not scripner's error.
Right, it's a change to the language.
Could this be linked to the original language we discussed that was moved up to section one?
That's, that's what I was.
I'll have to look.
No way it's more.
That's where it come from, Bob, yeah.
Section one's a preamble?
Yeah.
Corporate existence.
Corporate existence.
They are similar.
Do they match?
Pretty close.
They do, yeah.
Pretty close.
If they match, we can link them together, or if you don't mind matching them, we can link them together.
I think the intention was the same in both situations.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only difference is, I think, is the word promote or something.
Yeah, which I've, I don't, I don't like that word, I'd offer up a synonym.
Yeah.
I like the intent.
If you all are okay with matching the language, I think we can do that.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yes.
And the comma.
And the comma.
And the comma.
Right. No, seriously, the comma's important.
The comma makes a difference.
Yeah. All right. I think we're good there, Russell.
All right, so the next proposed change is in section 7.02 subsection C. And it refers to the results of the election, and it adds the word at least because the way it was written, it said if 60% of the qualified electors voting on a proposed amendment votes for its adoption is shall be considered adopted.
I think this is actually a very critical change.
Yeah.
I'm serious, because, because the way it's worded is it has to be precisely 60%.
And nothing else.
So is this a scripner's error, really? I mean.
I mean, I think we all know the intention, but.
Yeah.
The letter of the law.
You're right.
Says it's got to be precisely 60%.
61% winning may get thrown out because it says 60.
No, no one would read it like that, by the way, but I appreciate it, you're right, it could have been written more artfully.
You get an attorney, no, no offense, you get an attorney that wants to fight you on that, and let me tell you, they, they would have a fight, they would have a fight. So I think this is actually a pretty critical one.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, the next section is 7.0.
Let me just say, are we good, are we all agree on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Russell, good.
I apologize.
This is an important one.
Item 7.03 related to the appointment of the Charter Review Committee, basically set to change the terms that they are, or, or the frequency, I should say, of, of the review from at least once every four years to once at le, at, sorry, at least once every 10 years.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
If I can suggest one little caveat to this, to coincide with the census.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And, and I may even stay one step further, reading this now for the first time, that you all may want to do it following the results of the census.
Good idea.
Right.
Good idea.
Because.
Following this.
I think it's sometimes important for you all to have the results to see where the town has changed.
Right. And I think that was the intention of the committee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Federal.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm missing the benefit of doing this after the census numbers have come in.
If something changes demographically, if something changes population-wise, if, you know, the, the results change, that maybe you want to do some sort of amendment to the charter based upon the results and findings of the federal government. If you don't care about that, then do it every, you know, consistent with, but sometimes.
I'm just trying to apply that.
No, but I'm saying.
Been through this a couple of times now.
It may or may not, you know, right now, we've been pretty similar, you know, every time, but I'm just looking for 100 years from now.
I guess it gives us more data points that we can take into consideration.
That's, that's correct. That's the only reason why I mentioned that.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're good on that one, Russell.
Okay, then the next section that's proposed for an amendment is section 8.08 Boards and Committees. And in subsection B, the proposed language is to add the words, I'm sorry, add the sentence, all appointees shall be qualified electors of the town. So the reference here is that all appointees to any boards or committees must be qualified electors of the town.
What does that mean?
They have to be voted, they have to be a registered voter?
Yeah, this one, this one, you know, we had this discussion earlier, and we put this in, in ordinance. And, and I, I double-checked that it was in there, I wanted to make sure it was in there. I don't think, personally, I don't, I think this is a, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to have it in both.
I don't know how you, how you check that, I mean.
Yeah.
You know.
Is it already in ordinance?
It is.
Yeah. What do you mean you don't know how you check it? You check the voter roll.
Yeah.
Right.
Check the voter roll, but, you know, so, so if somebody decided not to vote anymore, you know.
So if they're not a voter.
They want, they're not a voter anymore or something.
I just, you know, it's in, it's already in ordinance in our town. I don't, I don't think it rises up to the.
We already have the ordinance, so we shouldn't.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be putting that in.
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling. Any, are we, are we okay with dropping that one? It being in ordinance?
I'm okay with it.
I'll let go.
Okay, Russell?
Okay, the, the next section that's proposed to be changed, I alluded to this at the very beginning, which was section 9.1 Creation and Establishment of the Town. The committee felt that this actually should be at the very beginning of the charter, and so they proposed that it be, be placed at the very beginning and the section number be changed to 1.01. So it's stricken from this section, but basically relocated to the very beginning of the charter.
Which was an excellent idea.
What's the thoughts on this one? For it. Is, Keith, let me ask you this, moving something, it's not a change in the content of the charter, it's just moving it within the charter, does that need to go out to the ballot?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So I want to look at that.
Okay.
It's all you're doing is renumbering, is all you're doing.
That's all we're doing.
Yeah.
So, if we can, if we can.
I'm pretty sure I can.
Okay, okay, good. So then we're, we're good with that one, Council?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, and then the remaining sections of the charter were proposed to be deleted or stricken because these were, I guess, holdover, holdover language from the, the bill that created the town's charter and the legislative act. And so the thought was we could remove this because it no longer really applied. I know that you're feeling on, or you're, you're, you're feeling that you stated earlier related to the history of the town, I'm not sure how you or the rest of the council feels about this particular item, but that's, that was the intent.
To be honest with you, the other one, the other wording was more, I felt, more historical than this wording here.
Slide down a little bit, run.
No, I was asking, keep sliding.
So this one here, I could go either way on, to be honest with you.
I just wanted to know who negotiated 9.07 with the county, because I don't believe we've still made 9,000 people, have we?
No, not yet.
No.
We're working on it, so, we're working on it.
They paid us for a little more than we had, I think we were about 7,000 at the time.
Yeah.
Well, our population has been forecasted to increase by 20, 30, by 600 more residents.
600, so.
Yeah.
That'll push us over 8,000.
If you look at the 10-year water supply, drill, if you go drill down in the fine print, it gives you those numbers that they've come up with, the planners have come up with.
Interesting.
Yeah, and if you take the two, I worked it backwards, if you took the 600 and you divided it by the average family size of 2.3, blah, 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 we have another 200 homes or something like that.
That's about right.
Sounds all right.
I remember when we did this, it was a negotiation, because back then we only had about 5,000 and change residents. We negotiated 9,000 into the bill in order to get a little bump up in revenue, because this was revenue being transferred from the county to the town on day one of startup. So that's where that came from.
I like the bump.
So if we were to remove this, can this once again fit in with just?
It wouldn't fit in with the other, you'd have to actually just say deleting.
So we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's not worth going to the voters, I mean, there's more important things out there.
Right, if we got, we only got to do three questions.
Yeah, yeah, this is not, this is not one of them.
No.
We need to make them count.
If I, I'm, I'm very sorry, I'm sorry after.
No, go ahead.
If we get through this, going back to 8.08.
Okay, let's, let's finish this and then we'll, and we'll go back to it.
All right, thanks.
So.
If I can recommend one thing.
Yeah.
On the next election after that, which is the remaining three election, we could put a, a one question charter amendment on that ballot, just saying cleaning up the, the charter to remove antiquated provisions and, and get rid of everything at that point.
Okay, good.
So we would do it the same way, we would just have to wait.
Wait a couple of years.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt, like, she's sitting there.
No, it doesn't. Exactly.
Not going anywhere.
Right, okay, I like that. Uh, yeah, David, so let me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, David. So are we, we all good with that?
I'm fine.
That we leave it there and, but we'll put it on the list to do in?
24.
2024, yeah, okay.
Going back to 8.08, I think the intent with 8.08 is to make sure that our advisory boards and our committees are limited to residents of the town.
And it is in the ordinance.
It is in the ordinance.
Absolutely.
All right, that's fine.
All right.
Which we violate.
Russell, is that?
That concludes the proposed changes by the Charter Review Committee. Again, I want to thank them all for their, for their steadfast.
Yeah, great job.
Participation.
Really, a lot of, a lot of time and effort went into that.
Good job. Thank you, Mary Ann.
And.
Okay.
As far as the committee, that's the, that concludes their proposed changes. I know, Mayor, that there's something that you wanted to bring forward, so I'm prepared to bring that on the screen.
Okay, yeah, please do. So when I was reading through the charter again, I came across this, and it was a reminder that the issue that we had, you know, with the passing of Freddie Fisickelli.
Right.
And the fact that the way our charter lays out the rules for filling a vacancy like that, we, we could not meet it. We, we, frankly, there was no way to follow our charter. And, correct me, Keith, on this, but I believe we actually went to the state attorney to get, you know.
Attorney general.
Attorney generals, to, to get approval for not following our charter. And so to me, you can do that once, because you're in a crisis situation, you didn't know better, but you can't do it again. It can't become a standard operating procedure, you know. I mean, hopefully, we'll never go through this again, but, but frankly, we've, we've gone through this now twice in the short time that we've been, been a town. So, so I came up with this wording, and I'd like to, I'd like to just run through it. And I'm not saying it's perfect, but what it, there was, there was a few factors, yeah, thank you, thank you, Russell. There's, there's a few factors that this takes into, into place, takes into account. First of all, it's that, you know, we, we have a number of, of things, items that we vote on where we need 5-0. And so we want to try and minimize the time that we would be short a council member and, and have to put off all those votes because we only have four people on the council. And so, so that was, that was one of the intentions in, in making up these rules. The second one is to try and avoid any sort of a special election. We are not a huge community, and trying to twist arms for the supervisor of elections for a special election, you know, frankly, they've just flat out turned us down last time when we investigated about that. So, so I don't think that's realistic. So, so that was the other guiding principle with this, is to move everything towards the next upcoming general election. Also saves the, the town a substantial amount of money doing that. So, so I'll just kind of go through these, and so if there's a council vacancy, the council would, in all situations, select a, a council, the, the replacement council member within 90 days. They would do an election, a selection, just like we've done in the past. That way, we know that at, at the longest will be is 90 days being short of a, a council member, well, then we'll be back up to five folks, because there's no way to schedule an election, you know. A, a general election, even a special election, you know, is set so that you have to qualify in June for an election that's in November, five months later. Well, you have to have some time before that qualification to get, find out who's interested in it. So you probably need at least 30, probably 60 days before that. So you're talking about seven, eight, nine months that you would be without a council member, and, and all of that in business that required a 5-0 vote would have to be put on hold. So this gets around that by, by the 90 days. And then basically what it's saying is that would, that, that, that council member would be appointed in the 90 days. The, the appointment would reclaim, it would remain in place until the next general election that came around, that person could either run or not run, but certainly then, obviously, the, the town would, would elect whoever's going to be in that seat. And, and then the next line, what the intention of the next line is to make sure that we stay on the same election cycles that we are currently on, so that if, if somebody, if we were doing this in the first year or two of the, the person's term, they, they would, they would, we would make sure that that next cycle where they were elected, like, let's, let's say, it's kind of a, I guess you kind of have to walk through it. So, so let's say someone was elected to office and then 90 days later, something happened and they had to step down from their spot, okay? Well, that was a four-year term that just started, right? So, so we would, the council would appoint somebody within 90 days, and then in about a year and a half, that seat would come up for election and the voters would vote on it. However, that term still has two more years left on it, right? So when that individual got elected, to make sure they get back on the right cycle, that seat would come up again for election in two more years, so it would stay on the right cycle again, get back on the right cycle.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, we shouldn't mess with the cycle.
Shouldn't mess with the cycle. So that's the point of, of letter C there, is to make sure that we stay on the same cycle.
That makes sense.
Let me, let me ask you a question about this, though, because I'm thinking, let's say somebody had to step down for whatever reason right after the qualification period for the upcoming election. Would the person we appoint then basically be there for two years? Would the person we appoint then basically be there for two years?
Basically be there for two years.
Okay, so that's kind of the longest-type scenario.
It's, yeah, it's the longest, not the greatest situation, but...
Well, this fixes, and when I fix it, it addresses.
It addresses.
Okay.
Is there a language in, and I wish I had it with me, a language in the charter that says that if there's a vacancy before the two years, that, and there was like maybe two persons in that election, that the other person would automatically get that seat or something like that? I, um, okay, all right. What is the process? And I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I wish I brought it with me. To, if there is a vacancy before half of the term is completed, what's the procedure for replacing a council member?
In today's charter?
Today's charter.
Council member, we're going to put it on the monitor for everyone.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Makes it easier.
You know, Stephen, I'm thinking if somebody is, missed the qual, resigned after the qualification period, they just wouldn't be, they couldn't run. Somebody, assuming somebody else was running.
Right.
If somebody else wasn't running, then we'd have to appoint.
Right.
Less than one year remains.
Right. So, you know, this is here, it's filling the vacancy. If it's less than one year remains in the unexpired term, the vacancy shall be filled by the council within 30 days. Well, we tried that, you know. 30 days is not long enough. You can't get the word out, you can't determine who's going to be interested, you know, that's...
Too fast.
It's too fast. It doesn't work. You know, I'll be honest with you, the first time I did this, I went through it, and I reworked the numbers. I reworked, you know, expanded out the number of days and things like that, and it got really complicated, and it got to be a real mess. And so I was like, wait a minute, I'm going to start over again, and just try and keep it simple. And that's, and so I ended up with this other wording, okay? But then two, if a year or more remains in the unexpired term, then it'll be filled by a special election. Well, we know there's issues with special selections. We may not even be able to do it. If we do do it, it's going to be very expensive to be held, not sooner than 60 days, but not more than 120 days. There's no way to do a special election in 120 days. Not going to happen. Persons filling the vacancy shall meet all qualifications. That's perfect. Nothing wrong with that. No candidate for vacancy meets the qualifications under this article, that vacancy for the council, this one is fine. It's really those top two that this would replace.
I now fully understand where you're going. I may suggest to clean up the language a little bit when we bring back the final ordinance, but the way I just did the math in my head, the maximum term someone would be running for is essentially two years.
Yes.
Okay? Or, excuse me, that they'd be appointed for two years. So just to make sure everyone in the council understands it, and everyone in the audience understands it, if a council member has a four-year term and passes away or resigns in their fourth year, but they can't get on that ballot for that election cycle.
Right.
What would happen is, well, that's actually interesting. We'll have to, I'm now thinking of two other scenarios. Now I know why you did this.
I know where you're going.
Because if there's someone already running for that seat.
That's what I was just talking to you.
That person would get in, we have to, we'd have to make sure that that's clear in the charter.
We would make the appointment until the election, and then that other person would take over the seat.
Well, you wouldn't make an appointment at that point at all, so we'd have to make it clear. So just you'd have the vacancy until that.
You're talking June and November at that point.
It depends. If it was like happened in June, so that the election is five months away, we would make an appointment within 90 days, and that person would serve out till November, and then whoever was qualified would take over in November.
Okay, that's how you're suggesting it on that one. Okay, but if that was the only person running for that seat, you would appoint someone for a two-year term till the next election comes up.
Right.
And then that person would run for two years.
That's correct.
And then they'd get back on the election cycle thereafter.
That's exactly right.
Okay. So that's the worst-case scenario. We're going to have to write this up a little bit clearer. That is the worst-case scenario.
Because the goal is not for the council to appoint somebody for two years. That would be the worst-case scenario. But in some situations, it could possibly turn out that way.
Interesting. It's really after qualification that that scenario comes up.
Yeah.
Just taking Keith, just maybe I didn't fully understand Keith's explanation. I just want to consider this. Qualification period ends. You have one candidate who has been an existing council member who was on a post. Something happens. Council would replace that person for 90 days. Would that person wait until two years plus that term?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
They would miss that general election, so it would be until the next general election.
That's exactly what I want to make sure it's covered.
Yeah, you could be two years and a couple of months.
And then they'd run for a two-year post, and then they'd have to run again.
Right. You know, I'll be honest with you, Keith, as I thought through that, and tell me if this is right or wrong, I think how technically how that would work is, I mean, that, that term expires, because it was during the qualification period, that term would expire in November.
Right.
And I think the council would actually have to appoint somebody else right after the election.
If that's the way you'd want to write it up?
I don't necessarily want to write it that way.
No.
I'm just thinking that that's when the actual term ends.
You can write it up either way you want. Once it's in your charter, it's in your charter.
Okay. I mean, I would prefer not to write it up that way, because that's pretty...
But if that, yeah, we'd have to appoint somebody again after Election Day. That doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. This is what you get when you have a business analyst as the mayor. For a living, he thinks these types of things through to the, you know, to the finest degree, so we're getting the benefit.
Do get paid to do this.
Good job.
So I think it's very important. I'm going to suggest some tweaks to it that I'll work with you on directly.
Okay.
But it's an important ordinance, because the other one clearly did not work. An important change.
Right. All right. So then let's go to the second part, because the mayor, at first I thought, actually, I'll be honest with you, I wrote the council one, I said, we're good. And Russell actually sent me a note and said, what about the mayor? And I thought about it, and I said, you know what? It is. It's quite a bit different. So let's run through the mayor. If he could do that, then we could test it out. We could test it out. All right. So if the vacancy is associated with the mayor's position, what I'm proposing here is at that point, the vice mayor would become the mayor. They would take over that, those responsibilities immediately. And I used at that point "acting mayor" because, just to distinguish it from some other wording later on. But they have all the responsibilities of the mayor, and they would remain in that role. There wouldn't be an appointment. They would remain in that role until the next scheduled election, okay? They would be the mayor till the next election. At the next meeting of the town council, out of the remaining four individuals, a new vice mayor would be chosen.
I see this as a little different than the last one, just to tell you legally, because the vice mayor becoming the mayor, you have someone who's actually elected. So there's nothing wrong with having that person that the electorate, and we elect at large here, being the mayor until that next election comes up.
And that's what I'm proposing.
Right, but currently, if the mayor becomes incapacitated, resigns, or something else, the vice mayor becomes mayor. So that's currently in the charter today. So what I'm saying is that that person just remains mayor, and the council appoints whoever's vice mayor's seat until the next mayoral election.
The same process as we just defined a few minutes ago.
Well, no, he's saying something a little different.
What did I miss?
Because what he's saying is that if that were to happen in the first year, the town would not have the opportunity to vote for a mayor in the next general election. That person would serve, say, for three and a half years as mayor, rather than a year and a half.
So is it more of a temporary vice mayor?
I mean, I said acting mayor.
Well, act ma, excuse me, acting mayor, yeah.
And I like that. I think it should go to the next election, just because I think the residents should have the opportunity.
Model it the same way.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll write it up the same way.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Okay.
But then who gets appointed?
The remaining four would pick a new vice mayor.
No, no.
Oh, no, no. So I'm getting there. I'm getting there. I haven't got there yet. You're ahead of me.
There's a void here.
There is a void.
Exactly.
So we're getting there. We're getting there.
They would appoint.
Okay. So now, so then at that point, to Gary's point, there's now some council seat, a district seat that's open.
There is.
Right.
Okay? And so that basically then follows the prior logic to say that they would then, in 90 days,
revert.
They would, you know, pick somebody to sit in that seat, and then in the next election.
But that's not fair.
Well, but, but hold on.
Because then, yeah, no, because you could be forcing a district seat to have to run again.
Right.
If they're on the same term as the mayor. If the mayor resigns in year one, and you're appointing the vice mayor to that seat, and they're part of that same four-year term, then you're making them run again for their seat that they had previously in two years, when the next election comes up.
So let's look, I laid out all three options here. So let's walk through them.
Am I not, I may not be explaining this. I think...
Yeah. No, I know what you're saying, but let's walk through it. Let's walk through it, okay? Because, all right, so the acting mayor has an option of three different things.
I see what you're doing.
You see what I'm going?
Yeah.
All right. You all have to be patient, all right? You have to be patient. All right. So the acting mayor has three options. First option is, they can step back to their district role, and if it has not expired, they can complete the term, okay? So to your point, that would not happen. The acting mayor may rerun for their district seat if they're in the second half of the two years. And then it's just like a regular election, like anything else. Or the acting mayor may remain for the full term of the mayor, depending on how it fell. So in other words, if it's in the last two years, then they serve out the rest of the mayor's term, if it's in the first two years.
I'm going to make a suggestion, which you may kill or whatever. The vice mayor becomes mayor until that next election. They automatically go back to their seat, no choices, and you have an election for the mayor.
Well, that's essentially, that's essentially what this is saying.
Yeah, but then just right at that, you know, the vice mayor becomes mayor for the, until the next election, and at that point, they go back to their district seat. That's right, unless they run for mayor.
And that's, I mean, that's, so that's maybe a simpler, the way you've worded it, maybe simpler, but I think we're saying the exact same thing. I think we're saying the exact same thing.
Perfect. I'm just not giving options.
I just wanted, when I explained it to, you know, so that we could see how the three different paths that would be potential for that acting mayor to take. So we all understood it. That's all. But we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
But given the scenario, then, if the mayor stepped down in, you know, six months after being elected, the new acting mayor would really only be in the seat for the balance until the next, the next general election. They don't have a choice to continue on after that.
Well...
Unless they ran. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, there's no, you can either run or you can stay.
There's no automatic.
Okay.
The next election is an election that the people choose.
So they're roughly modeled the same, then, I think.
They would at that point. We're just, I understand why you wrote it that way.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain how...
Great idea.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, though, the vice mayor becomes the mayor, serves out the term, let's say it's more, it's greater than 12 months. Council appoints a new vice mayor, whoever.
No, they appoint the new, the district seat.
No, 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 he's right.
Well, no, they get a...
At the next meeting, they appoint a new vice mayor.
Vice mayor, sure.
And then, within 90 days, they appoint a new district council member. So you could be creating a situation.
Right, that's where I'm going with this.
If the mayor, acting mayor decides, I want to go back to my old seat.
Right.
There's somebody else sitting in the old seat, and life in the ranches gets interesting.
Why wouldn't the person sit?
No, no.
Wait a minute.
Because anybody at that point, it's a general election. Anybody can run for the seat.
But it's, yeah, of course. If the term of that district seat expires at the next general election, then there's nothing to discuss here. If the term of that person does not expire, they can either run for mayor, or they should go back into their old seat.
No, or they go back into the general public. That's what I thought it was going to be.
Go back into the general public.
So meaning that if the council appoints someone for the district seat from the general public,
Right.
and the vice mayor, who's acting as mayor, says, I'm going to go back down to my seat after this election, I don't want to be mayor anymore, the person who was appointed is done.
Right.
At that election.
That's, that's the way I...
They don't stay on. They're done.
That needs to be put in there.
It's only temporary.
It's a temporary appointment. It's not an elected person.
I can go either way. I mean, to me, you know, I look at it, if somebody, if somebody was vice mayor, I mean, to me, I want to give the choice to the people. So, but if, but let's walk through the scenario. So they're vice mayor, they get appointed as mayor, they serve as acting mayor for a year and a half. They want to go back to their district seat, and they can't get elected to their district seat? Something serious with that.
So they'd have to run again, then, for a seat that they'd still have two years on their term.
And they've already won.
And they've already won.
You know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not...
To me, it's, yeah.
It's complicated, but I mean...
You're penalizing someone for wanting to be vice mayor.
Right.
I'm inclined to take the position that, that filling of that vacancy, because the person becomes mayor, is temporarily holding that district seat. And they lose that seat if the, if the acting mayor decides to go back to his district seat midterm.
Okay. I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. I'm not going to argue it. I mean, there's good logic to it.
I'm just seeing all the possible scenarios.
Right.
Could go south?
Yeah, that's a valid scenario.
I was just trying to keep it consistent and simple, to be honest with you.
Well, I think that's consistent with the way we're talking about the council seats. Oh, it's different. Never mind. Never mind. Never mind. It's different.
Very different. But I'm fine with that. It sounds like that's the consensus of council, and I'm fine with it.
Mortality, my friend.
It's up to you, Keith, to write it out.
This is going to be challenging. I can see how many times you did this.
I did.
It must have been like...
I went through it. I went through it many times.
That's right. It's obvious.
Yeah.
Well thought out.
The mayor, the bottom line is, nobody can die. How's that?
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Let's just make that ordinance, okay?
Can we put that in ordinance?
We all have to look to 101.
All right. All right. So do we have a consensus to move forward with this one?
Yeah.
Sure.
You agree with it?
Yeah, I'd like to see the final answer.
Absolutely. Well, for all of them. All right. All right. So I think this is, let's see where we're at. I don't know if anybody was taking notes on the good ones, how we're going to do this. So I think the one we just spoke of, I definitely feel like that's one of the three, because I feel like we're almost on borrowed time with that.
Yeah, because it addresses problems that we've had in the past and we may encounter in the future.
It is a problem that needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
I would recommend that the cleanup one, the last one we spoke about, and the 60% one, because they're just, be placed on that next ballot afterward.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I am, too.
Yes.
And so the ones that we would put on this one.
I think the 10-year.
10-year.
Coincides with the census.
Federal census.
Okay, right, right.
Federal census.
Okay, I think that's one. The residency.
Yes, that was where I was going.
And then you're here.
And this one, those three.
Those three.
I think that's...
And then we do the other ones.
The election certification of the election.
All right. And just so, because I'm going to start working on this immediately, we have vacancy charter review, vacancy, which is what we just discussed, the charter review every 10 years following the results of the census. Residency, we're going to look at the mayor issue, but you want it for both the mayor and the district seats. The district seats with two years in that district, and the mayor either five years, or if we can get away with it, someone being on the council first before running for mayor. Okay?
Yes, I think that's good. Any, do we have a consensus on that from the council?
Three, have with me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think we did. I think we're good. Any other discussion on this item?
This item, meaning?
No.
This discussion.
No, I just want to thank the committee and thank everybody for putting in their time.
A lot of hard work, a lot of reading.
Certification of the election.
Is, I think that's, that's two years later, I think is where we ended up.
Okay.
What's that now?
For the certification one?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a two-year one.
Let's, you know what? Let's make sure that we document which ones are going to be handled in two years. I want to make sure that we don't lose visibility.
We're going to draft them all now.
Okay.
So meaning this council will approve an ordinance for one for two years, and the one for coming up. So that we're done. Because I don't want anyone to have to say what we're supposed to do.
Good.
So now I have three and three, which is actually a perfect number.
Perfect.
So you have the three for two years from now, being the cleanup, 60% certification, and for this year, vacancy charter review and residency requirement.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more request?
Yeah.
Could I ask that the committee stay around for the next 10 years? They did a great job here, and, you know.
You can ask them.
Ask them if they'd like to do it again in 10 years.
You could always ask, Jim.
All right, thank you.
I do also want to echo that, just really appreciate all the work that the committee did on this. They did a really amazing job. I know it was a ton of time. They looked not only through our charter, but they looked through other charters, did a lot of research, spent a tremendous amount of time, a bunch of different nights, coming out here and doing the work. So thank you all for that. Really, a great job. Great job. Jason, I saw your hand come up. I would like to say a couple of words.
I just have one thought. So for the, for the length of time requiring someone to be able to run, right, such as five years and 10 years, so I'll give you an example. So I've been a resident for 13 years now, I think. Could be a little off. Until I got involved with the town, how long I've been in the town wouldn't really help me to understand what's going on, until you actually step foot into the chambers, until you go to a meeting. I'm not saying we should have a requirement like that, but you could be a resident 20 years, you know, and never interact with anything that's going on in town. That wouldn't help you necessarily to be able to be more effective on the diocese, in my opinion. I think what helps you is, like Bob, sat here for 20 years, and again, he still didn't know, but the fact is that he was involved. So I think we should, you know, just throwing it out there, think about it. Does that make a really a difference, just because of longevity? Living in a town that you don't even know the operational side of it, you know the receiving side of it, you know, your bulk, you know, your taxes. But I mean, if you were to do a survey and ask, you know, residents, general questions that you guys know, that live here, that have never stepped foot in here, they probably don't know those answers. So just a thought.
Yep.
The intent is...
No, I think it's a good, it's a good observation, and I think it's why the serving a term once is actually a better option than the number of years. Yeah.
If we can do that.
Good point, Jason. Thank you. All right. Somewhere, I've got an agenda here. So we moved that item up, so now item number nine, I believe, has been tabled, or we need to physically table it tonight?
I'll make a motion to table.
Yep. So we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Russell, if you can please call the roll on you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something if I can, and tattle on myself on this particular one. So this particular item is actually an item that was on first reading on December 16th, and was basically tabled indefinitely, because council wanted to send it back to the comprehensive plan, so I just wanted to clarify for, just for the record. So the item actually was sent to the comprehensive plan board, and actually, my understanding is it was approved, and it will be coming back in the near future. It'll be coming back as a second reading. It'll be coming back as a first reading item, because it never was approved on first reading.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that. And also, just to clarify, we did, I know council was appraised, and the petitioner was appraised, that the Akai item that was supposed to be on this agenda, because of the advertising issue that we couldn't meet, did not appear on this particular agenda. It will be on the next agenda, the vacation easement ordinance, okay? So just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table this item. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Right. Item number 10.
Staff is requesting a thing.
The motion and the motion. Do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, I, I'm just saying it's not, what we just did wasn't the tabling because the item can't come back before you as a second reading. It was just withdrawing the item and re-advertising.
Okay.
So the item, just for the record, has been withdrawn.
Been withdrawn, all right.
Cause it's coming back to you on first reading. It's not coming back to you on second reading.
So what happened? So the motion we just took?
Uh, it, it didn't make sense. That's what I was saying to Russell. Cause you tabled second reading on an item that can never come back to you on second reading.
Right.
So instead the item was just, it just, well, the record reflected the item's been withdrawn.
Okay.
It's gonna be re-advertized and rebrought back before you on first reading.
Okay. Right. Okay, thank you Keith. Okay, the next item, Mayor, is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving an agreement with Her Homes LLC for roadway repairs and traffic sign maintenance services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Andy, I wonder if you want to just say maybe a couple of words on this because this is a change in vendor and we, I, I frankly want to show some appreciation for Weekly. They've done a great job for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as you, as you've alluded, this is a contract that was held by Weekly Brothers for a number of years. They've done an outstanding job for us. Uh, we went out to bid. Weekly's did respond to that, but we did get a, a more favorable contract, uh, or contract terms from Her Homes, who's done some, some work for the town, uh, previously. And one of the principals involved with that company has, has done work for the town even, even before that. So they've, they've really been good to work with. They've been outstanding. Uh, as, as wonderful as the Weekly's have been and as good to us as they've been, we're, we're very excited to award this contract to, to somebody who's, who's hungry and quite honestly is out there and tracking potholes and everything else. They're ready to start making those repairs as soon as next week should council award the contract tonight. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public input on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the people of Ukraine's continuing quest for a free and democratic state, providing humanitarian relief to those suffering in, in Ukraine, denouncing the actions of the military of the Russian Federation and their president Vladimir Putin, and urging the United States federal government and its allies to take substantive action to punish the Russian, Russian Federation and providing an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna give special thanks to David for, uh, proposing that we put this on here. It's, uh, you know, what's going on right now is, um, frankly is criminal.
It is.
And so David, I don't know, you may want to say a few words on this.
Um, just, um, I spoke with Joseph and, um, i- it's really important to his family. And, uh, we do have, uh, a Ukrainian, was Keith, did you say a barber shop?
Oh, that's correct. George is Ukrainian. He's from, uh, uh, Odessa.
It's right on the border. Yeah.
So, so there is a link to our town.
Absolutely.
And, um, you know, of some of my ancestors, it's hard to trace what parts of Europe they're from because, you know, my paternal, uh, or my maternal grandfather, um, changed his last name, uh, from Kostenski ending with an I. It used to end with a Y. It was IY. He removed the Y to an I. Uh, my paternal grandfather was illiterate. And there's no telling where, I mean, he, he came from Poland, but you know, Eastern Europe is all of my ancestry. So I really felt a, a, a deep commitment to this. It was kind of important to my family as well.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to say some words too.
Yeah, Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, I'd like to send out a special thank you to a commissioner from Oakland Park named Matthew Sparks. I met him at the Bar League of Cities. He had a pin on that we're currently wearing and I thought it was a real nice pin. So he actually made these and sent them here for the council to wear. So I'd like to make that, you know, special thank you to him, uh, for doing that. And I'd also like to thank our councilman here, Mr. David Kozinski, for the flowers up front to represent the flowers from the country. Uh, they brought those in, they set them up. And I mean, that's quite a, you know, a thing from David. I thank you very much for that, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Um, I'd like to say a couple of words too. Um, this, uh, about 15 years ago, we took a, we took a, a trip to Eastern Europe, um, and actually we're in Russia and we also were in Ukraine. And we were fortunate enough to stay in, uh, in a very old hotel in Kiev. And, but it looked out over the, the main square there where you could see the statue, um, there. And, and frankly, frankly, it's, it's heartbreaking to see the pictures of that today. It was so beautiful when we were there visiting. And, um, to see that statue today and to see that square today destroyed, you know, for no good reason. It's just ridiculous. It's, 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 it's a crime. So anyway, um, it, it really, it, it is, uh, is something that, um, we hate to see. Our heart goes out to those that are, are affected directly by it and, um, and, and once again, we appreciate that this was brought up. I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Well, I, I wanted to make some comments as well.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I guess, uh, like David, I share some, uh, Eastern European history as well. And it's funny how you don't really think about these things until you're confronted with substantial change and the crimes that are going on over there. Uh, my grandfather's side of the family, on my father's side, where Hartman comes from, West Germany, got here fortunately before World War II. He was actually in New York Harbor when World War I broke out. And, uh, he had an option to jump ship and he did. And the rest is Hartman family history. My grandmother, on the other hand, came during World War I when, uh, families were being chased down and murdered, basically. And, uh, her family had kind of leapfrogged from very far Eastern Europe or Russia. We're not exactly sure. Uh, but, uh, they ended up in Northern Germany and again, she and her sisters got out, uh, just, uh, at the outbreak of World War I. So, you know, fortunately they weren't exterminated in World War II. Now, it, it hits home watching all of this because you see a city that's being, uh, excuse me, a country, city by city being erased from the map and reduced to rubble. So I, it, this struck me, so I wanted to write a few things down. And also I got a phone call yesterday that made me want to do this more. In a great European capital, we're now, now within range of Russian guns, President Volodymyr Zelensky is standing firm for democracy and freedom in his righteous defiance. I believe these moved hearts of everybody in America. At this moment, ordinary Ukrainians are defending their homes and their families against a brutal assault. And they are, by their own actions, inspiring millions with their courage and devotion. The citizens of Ukraine are defending each other by paying the ultimate price. They're defending freedom and fighting for the right to preserve their democracy. And as I think today, one of the most proudest boasts in the free world is "yat Ukrainets", which means "I am Ukrainian". So this is a moment for all of us worldwide to put our, our, our differences aside. I know speaking for our community, when I say that we Americans and our partners around the world are determined to press on. To press on with supplying our Ukrainian friends with, uh, weapons and the support they need to defend their homeland as they deserve. You and your families too can, can help, but be careful. Yesterday I received a call from a group on my cellphone that, uh, I couldn't verify. They, when I asked them their name, they were soliciting donations for, uh, Ukrainian relief. As soon as I asked for their name, they hung up. So I think the scammers are already starting. We donated through UNICEF. If you feel strongly as we do, check with your church, look for some groups on the news programs that are already providing relief or look for an organization you already know. That's why we chose UNICEF. Our country and our allies can help, but we as families can help too. It's an amazing thing going on there. Thank you for the time.
No, thank you.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm gonna open up to the public. Anybody? Yeah.
Noah Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. On my father's side, we go back into America before the revolution. And one of my relatives was the first, uh, one of the generals of the Revolutionary War. But on my wife's side, her family comes from Poland. And during World War II, her family was extinguished in Poland. Her great-grandfather came over before 1900 when the Japanese-Russian war took place, the Russo-Japanese War. When he was drafted into the Russian army. That evening, he left for America. And left through the port of Brez in Germany. So I understand refugees because my wife's family were refugees in their history. They made great strides here in America. And yesterday, 150 Ukrainians arrived in South Florida and have been pelished into homes here in South Florida. They are beginning their change to becoming Americans at this point. Hopefully they will be able to return if they wish, so desire. But it is still a consternation that my wife knows there is no history beyond her great-grandfather. All of that has been extinguished through war. And she got a phone call from a friend in Europe that, uh, went over there many years ago and has lived in Germany for a long time and said the new swastika is a Z. And there is no Z in the acrylic language. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Yeah, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann Allen, Sunshine Ranches. Um, both my parents were refugees from Europe. My father, at 14 years old, starved through Europe, saw his friends massacred and killed. Um, my mother's family in Poland were thrown out by the communists in the middle of the night. My grandparents owned apartment buildings in Poland. And the communists came in and my mother, who was 10 years old at the time, her two sisters, one of them in a baby carriage, they were thrown out in the middle of the night. And her mother was so distraught, she put their heads on railroad tracks so that they could be run over. Luckily the train didn't come, otherwise I wouldn't be here. I understand very much the history of refugees and war, what it does to families, what my parents never got over. That affected us. But we have to be so careful when we get involved in wars because more information is coming out from the people, from Ukraine. They're saying that their own soldiers are shooting at them and keeping them from leaving those villages so that they could blame Russians. We don't know the whole story there, people. Please don't jump to conclusions. There are stories of Ukrainians that were killing Russians prior to this, if they even spoke Russian. There is a lot of stuff coming out of there. It's one of the most corrupt countries in the fact that Biden's son is on their energy committee. Pelosi's son is on their energy committee. And
Mary Ann.
Jim Carrey's on. We're, we're, we're all jumping on the bandwagon of supporting something that we don't really know all the answers to. We should sit back and wait. War is a terrible thing, but it's not the only thing that's going on. China is killing millions of people and yet we do business with them. And I just don't want to have that kind of hypocrisy where we choose somebody over another. I'm against war of any kind. I'm against persecution of people of any kind. Let's just be careful and let's get some more information before we jump on this bandwagon and create World War III. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, hi, Joseph. Oh, my throat's dry. I guess it's been a little while sitting, haven't, haven't spoken, but Joseph Altchill, Southwest 164 Terrace. Um, y- you know, I, you know, was planning to speak on this and then as I listened to the council, I, I thought, you know what? I don't even need to speak on this. You know, I, I can read the tea leaves and, you know, and then I listen to the last speaker and, you know, you want to respond to some of those comments, but I, I don't know that, that this is the time or place to do it. What I would say is, and I'll address Bob's comments about, uh, you know, how to help. You know, we, we want to encourage our people to help. I know that, that for me, for my family, we've been looking for ways to help, you know, what can we do? Uh, in, you know, I belong to a Rotary Club. This week we raised $45,000. We were trying to figure out, how can we spend this in the wisest way? I had the opportunity earlier this week to attend a Zoom meeting of the Rotary Club of New York. And the guest speaker was the president of the Rotary Club of Lviv. And they have, uh, they're operating on the Polish side of the border. They have already raised 1.2 million euros. They have sources in Poland and in Germany. Their biggest need is medical supplies. They don't need us shipping medical supplies to them. They need the money to buy it. So, you know, for us in, in Rotary, we're very transparent because it's our money that we're using. And so, you know, we're very, very careful, you know, where are we gonna put the money? We, initially, we're gonna put the money into shelter boxes. And, and as we explored more, we realized the most immediate use and, and benefit would be to go directly through the Rotary Club of Lviv. And so I would encourage you, if, you know, UNICEF, I'm sure is a great organization, but if you want an organization that doesn't have all the overhead and all the administrative costs, where you have all volunteers doing the work and the money's gonna go to the cause, consider something like the Rotary Club of Lviv. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to kind of lead you in that direction. But I, I thank you guys for considering this. This is important and, and as has been said many times, you know, all it takes for evil to triumph is for good men and women to do nothing. This is 1939. Let's not do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, uh, public comments closed. Um, so we have one item left on our agenda. It's, I frankly, uh, I think it's a, it's a very important, it's really, um, to a large degree, it's talking about the future of our town, um, going through the ARPA spending and, um.
Did we vote?
We didn't vote on the la, on, on the resolution.
Oh, we didn't.
You closed public comment.
I thought you were leading up to, do we need to do the Cinderella clause?
No, no, I, I think where the mayor was going is rolling that item, but we gotta vote on the first one first.
Let's vote on this one. Sorry, my apologies. Let's, Russell, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, no, really where I was going was not the Cinderella rule, but I, I think this is, this is a super important item. And I don't want to handle it at 11 o'clock at night. I think we should be fresher than that, uh, when we go through this. Um, this is a lot of money.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure we spend it in a way that is proper. So, so I, I would, I would, I would propose that, yeah, if somebody wants to table this till, uh.
I'll make a motion to table to what, the next meeting?
Andy, what is the, or Russell, what does the next meeting look like? Would it be appropriate to move to the next meeting?
We can move it to the next meeting. I would say, suggest that we put it as a presentation, move it ahead to the very beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be the next meeting.
Do we have any time constraints?
It's formatted this certain way.
Andy, do we have any time constraints?
No, we're, we're okay with that.
Okay. All right. So date certain for our next meeting?
Okay. Cause once you get the second and then we gotta go to a media vote on the table. I want to just make a comment. Should we be doing the ranking and then turn that into Andy now? So we have something to work with between now and next meeting?
I, I would prefer, we, I, I would prefer, actually, we all think about it for a couple more weeks.
Okay. No, I'm just throwing it out there.
Um, I don't want to rush into prioritizing things at five minutes till 11.
I agree.
This is, this is the future of our town.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get an opportunity with this kind of funding again. I want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah.
All right. So Bob, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I make, I, I think.
I second.
Russell? I'm making a motion to table this to our.
I, I just want to make sure because Russell's trying to work on an agenda issue and I understand where he's at. The next meeting, you're expecting a pre- where he's at. The next meeting, you're expecting a presentation on all these items, but then you're officially going to vote and rank them, correct?
I'm pushing this item to the next meeting.
No, no, but.
That's what I'm doing.
But at that, at that meeting.
You know, I'm not talking, so if we need to, I, I don't, I don't know what the, what do, what do we mean by a presentation? Were we going to, were we going to rank them here and then do a presentation next?
No, I think the thought was for this meeting tonight, we were going to present these to you, ask you for your rankings, but if there was a, a question about what these particular projects were, I thought that that might be something that was going to be discussed tonight. Obviously, if we're going to move this to the next meeting.
We're just moving it to the next.
Right, I understand that, but, okay.
Yeah, and I'll say the information has been supplied to you all.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, staff is available to discuss any questions you have on any of those items in particular prior to the next meeting so that you'll come in prepared.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're good. It was just how it was going to format on the agenda. It's going to be in the first item on the agenda next week.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
In two weeks.
Okay, good.
All right, so I make a motion to put, to table this for the, uh, March the 24th meeting?
Correct.
Uh, the, the, I'm just big, that what I'm told.
Second.
We needed a second. We got the second now.
We got the second, second.
Just to clarify the motion I made.
All right, is there any, uh, we're, we're tabling this motion so there's no discussion on it. If you could please call the roll.
Council Member Albritton?
Yes.
Council Member Hartman?
Yes.
Council Member Kozinski?